School Board Meeting of March 28th, 2023 is called to order. Will you please stand for a moment of silence? We honor these children and staff. Evelyn Dickinsonhouse, nine years old. Haley Scruggs, nine. William Kenny, nine. Cynthia Peak, sixty-one. Kathryn Kuntz, sixty. Mike Hill, sixty-one. These students and staff were killed by an act of senseless gun violence yesterday at Covenant School in Nashville, Tennessee. Please hold your silence. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Garza, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Chair Seber.
Here.
Vice Chair Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Hollingsworth.
Here.
Mrs. Brooks.
Here.
Mrs. Spall.
Here.
Mrs. Borussia.
Here.
Mr. B.P.
Here.
Ms. Island.
Here.
Thank you.
Dr. Newman, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda this evening?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. May I get a motion, please?
Chair, I move that the School Board of City of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Hollingsworth, seconded by Vice Chair Stevens at the School Board, the City of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Are there any opposed? The motion carries seven zero. Superintendent's announcements and spotlights. Mrs. Radford, would you please lead us?
Thank you, Chair Seber, Dr. Newman, greetings to other members of the board, and certainly hello to everyone that has joined us here at Jenny Dean tonight. I am very excited to share some wonderful news with you. We have plenty to celebrate here in Manassas City Public Schools. As you can see, we have a lot of people in our audience tonight, and primarily, they are our fabulous students, and we are excited for the opportunity to celebrate them. We're going to start off, as you know, that this is a high season for competition, so we are going to celebrate some of the recognitions that our fine arts departments, department has achieved over the last few weeks. So, we're going to begin with Metz Middle School, and we'll start with Mr. Bill Stevens, who is the band director there, and he'll share some of the highlights of the season for them.
Hello, everyone. We'd like to celebrate our Metz band. We're super excited. They just participate, participated in the District Nine, all district, sorry, the all district, not all district, assessment. There you go. Get there. Thanks, guys. And so, we have a number of students. We also have my co-director, Ms. Jessica Green, who has some students of hers that participated in the group. Could you come forward if you hear a name? We have student Adam Haverson. Please come up. Vivian Harrison, please come up. And Diego Hernandez.
And my students, when you hear your name, please come up. We have Mia Damas, please be recognized. Camilla Mendoza, please come up. Savannah Arnold, please come up. And Mary Della O, please come up.
And to just give a little bit of background of what a large group assessment is, this is essentially like our music programs ASOL. These groups work entirely countless hours just to prepare three pieces of music typically, and they get judged by three professional judges on stage. After that, they often go into a sight-reading room where they get judged by a professional sight-reading judge, and they judge them on all different types of elements of music, and it's real judging. I mean, these students have worked their tails off to reach the superior level, so that is the basic gist of large group assessment. So, ladies and gentlemen, the Metz Middle School Band.
And we have some more. Next, we have our choir director at Metz, Anola Douglas, and she'll share a little bit about their competition season.
Good evening. My name is Anola Douglas, and I'm the choir director at Metz Middle School. I'm here to share three things with you. I don't have a gaggle with me, sorry. I do have one kid with me, but we had our all-district chorus, which happened in February. I had four students make all-district chorus. Alex Maico, who is here, I saw him. Adriana Willard. Michelle McDonald. And Melanie Viadores. The second thing is all-state chorus. I had four students make Virginia all-state this year. Alex Maico was one of them. Nicole Gomez, Melanie Viadores, and Michelle McDonald. And then finally, we also had our district assessment last week. My performance choir received a superior from all four judges, so onstage for performance and also in sight-reading.
Now, in Osborn High School, I should note, as I prepare to introduce this group of people, that Osborn has once again earned Blue Ribbon Award recognition, the designation. Yes. We're going to get used to this. That's the highest achievement in band, orchestra, and choral performance in the state, so they have been rocking it at every competition, and we're excited to have representation from each group here tonight. So, we'll start off with Andrew Wassum, Director of Bands.
Good evening. Yes, we just concluded the assessment season at Osborn, and on the band end of things, the symphonic band earned straight superiors onstage and in the sight-reading room, and combined with the superior that the marching band earned at Fall Marching Assessment, Osborn High School will be a Virginia Honor Band program for only the third time in its history, the other two times being 1998 and 2019 before the pandemic. So, congratulations to... We have a contingent of seniors and section leaders here tonight representing the band program. And happy birthday, Foreman.
And next, we have Angela Easley, Director of Choirs, and she's going to give us some information about how they've been doing this season.
Good evening. Well, we are super duper excited to be here this evening. I have my list. I'm just going to read everything that, that we won. I'll start first with our District Nine Choral Assessment. Two, our top group, Center Stage, receives straight superiors across the board as well, which we always have the pressure on because orchestra and band made it first, and then it's, we're left, but we did it. We pulled it out and we got a superior, so that makes us a Blue Ribbon school, so, but I took my Beginner Girls and I took my Advanced Concert Choir, and they both received superior ratings as well. So, all choirs received superior. I have, let me get my girls up here for Eclipse, and my Beginner Choir, come up here. And I, but we have representatives from each choir, so come on down. Lena, Tiffany, and Shayna. And then, let me get my kids that are here from Concert Choir, Adrian, Shaleem, Liliana, Bricia. And then, all of Center Stage is here. But maybe we can just take a picture with them, and then we'll get Center Stage. Is that okay? Yes. So, this is representing Concert and Eclipse. Okay, we'll just go ahead, and I'll just, I'll call your first name, and you just, you come on up, okay? I'll just go down the row. Alicia. Logan. Kayden. Samantha. Angelina. Ava. Gabrianna. Ryan. Alexis. Hannah. Natalie. Anna. Keon. Brayden. Xander. Okay. Showband, you're going to just, you want to just come like kneel up here? Showband? So, hold on. Foreman. Foreman. Hosway. Aiden. Gabby. Satali. Is that all we have here tonight? Okay. And then, I want to recognize my crew. Adrian. Shaleem. Liliana. Bricia. Shayna. Okay, I'm getting there. The fabulous, fabulous Ms. Lynn Yost, our competitor. Our fabulous showband director, Mr. Andrew Wassum. And I'm the choir director. And quickly, I'll just go through. We went to five competitions. Commonwealth Choral Invitational, we earned first place, best vocal quality, best band, best show design choreography, best stage crew overall, and People's Choice Award. Costi Classic at Manchester High School, second place, best band, best show design, People's Choice Award. Titan Tournament of Choirs at Cosby High School, first place, People's Choice Award. Festival of Choirs at Hanover High School, open division, second place, best band, best costumes. The Diamond Classic at Powhatan, open division, grand champion, best band, best stage crew, best costumes, best vocals, best visuals. Our best soloist was Brayden Colding. People's Choice Award. And then, if you'll just give a wave, we have showmanship. They pick two people to win showmanship at every competition. Ryan Westcott won three times. Raise it up, Ryan. Xander Ramirez won it. Anna French won it. Alexis Whittig won it. And then, did I have Brayden? You won it once, right? Twice. Brayden Colding, twice. Am I forgetting anything else? I think that's it. Oh! All Virginia! So, Brayden Colding was our representative that made for all Virginia chorus, and so we will go with, what's her name? Alex. So, we'll be there with Alex and Ms. Douglas at the end of April for all Virginia chorus. No. No, you're not rooming with them, sorry, honey. Okay, that's it, I think.
All right. They are from, as we say at the school, I guess, O-S-B-O-U-R-N, right? So, thank you so much, Osborn, Director of Choirs. That was awesome. We have one more group from Osborn to recognize tonight. Latoya Lamans, who is the director... In case you didn't hear me, she is the Director of Orchestra at Osborn, so we'll talk a little bit about how they have achieved this season.
Good evening. I'm Latoya Lamans. I'm the new orchestra director here at Osborn, and pleasure to be here. I have a short list, but it's a fat list, because we took, we have Eagle Orchestra, Concert Orchestra, Symphonic Orchestra, and Chamber Orchestra. I combined Eagle and Concert and combined Symphonic and Chamber. Both groups received superiors, and I went back and looked at records. It's the first time in five years that there have been two superiors at Osborn. I'm going to call my kids up, too. Stephanie. Aziza. Margaret. Anne. Diane. Emmy. Marlene. Valerie. Ashley. Emma. And Anthony. We've worked really hard. You will see us back here next year.
And as you saw, Mr. Flugrath, the proud principal of Osborn High School, was there with his students. I believe that concludes all of our, did we miss any of our fine arts students?
I'd like to take a moment, while everybody's walking out, I'd like to take a moment to recognize our electeds here tonight. Mrs. Pam Sebeski, Vice Mayor of the City of Manassas. Mr. Tim DiMaria, Commissioner of the Revenue. Thank you for being here. And Ms. Anna DiMaria, who is President-elect for Manassas Education Association. Thank you all for being here and joining us tonight. Now, we'll go to Board Committee reports. Mrs. Stevens, do you have a report for our Policy Committee?
I'm going to deliver the report during discussion.
Thank you. And at our last educational support meeting, Mrs. Spall, you requested a new dean task force to be formed. Can you give us a report on that?
Yes. A Joint School Board-City Council Task Force has been formed to discuss the replacement of dean's school. The task force met last week and discussed the scope of the project budget estimates, the outcome-based needs for the new school, the master plan for the site of the school and park, timeframes for moving forward and with the project, and also next steps. The group requested that the superintendent, Dr. Newman, move forward with RFP to seek proposals for the design of a new dean that would accommodate 900 students and allow for future growth if necessary. The task force will reconvene once a design has been selected and new cost estimates have been obtained, which is expected to happen later this fiscal year.
Thank you, Mrs. Spall. Next up is citizens' comments. At this time, we welcome citizens who wish to speak about services, policies, and affairs of the City of Manassas Public Schools. Because we have an agenda we need to complete, we ask that comments be limited to three minutes. We appreciate the time you have taken to be here. We treat citizens' comments as a public hearing, and we do not engage in conversation with speakers. The lack of an immediate response to your comments should not be taken as a lack of interest or concern. Please be respectful when presenting your comments. Mr. Gerald Peters.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing my comments tonight. I want to talk a little bit about the budget. It really is a tough act to follow with, with all the, that, the music that was here. I mean, they've done some great things. I want to talk about the budget, specifically the budget item regarding five or four and a half new teachers for PE double classes. I think somebody dropped the ball in the analysis there, and I'll just point out a couple of things. One, I don't, the existing PE teachers and IAs were not involved in any of the discussion, and I think had they been involved, there probably wouldn't be as much of a shock when they found out, at least the IAs found out that they were losing their jobs. The, the second thing is, it appears to be a cookie-cutter approach to a real problem. When you have five elementary schools, trying to apply the same methodology to all five when they're not all the same, it makes, makes it very difficult to really come up with a, a cookie-cutter approach. I say that because one of the, one of the elementary schools is, kind of shares the facility with an intermediate school, and another elementary school doesn't even have a gymnasium. So, trying to make that work, it sounds like, well, we could just put the kids outside. Well, weather doesn't permit that. You can put the kids into a classroom, and kids don't do PE well in a classroom. They need to get exercise, they need to be moving around, and they need the facility to do that. So, my thought is to, a recommendation is to go back and take a look at that specifically at Round because of that facility, and I think you will quickly realize that the cookie-cutter approach that applied to Williams and Hayden and, the other one I'm missing, Baldwin, no, Baldwin, Jenny Dean, yeah, yeah. This is a great facility, and it wasn't when we first got here, right, Tim? I mean, there's, there's been some, some work done here, so there, there is no gymnasium there, and when you have the space limitations, it makes it really hard to teach PE. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda, which is next?
Chair, I move that the School Board of City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as modified.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Hollingsworth, seconded by Mrs. Brooks, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented? Presented. We didn't have any modifications, did we? Yeah. As presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Okay. Up tonight on our discussion agenda, first thing we'll do is policies. Vice Chair Stevens.
Thank you. On March 21st, the Policy Committee meeting, the Policy Committee met to discuss VSBA's new recommendations on model policies. The VSBA regularly, several times a year, reviews, revises, and/or updates their model policies. As a school division, we prefer, whenever possible, to adopt VSBA model policies as opposed to writing our own. The current update was related to 28 policies. Eleven policies were reviewed but not revised. Nine policies had legal and/or cross-references updated. Four were updated to reflect new legislation. Nine were updated to reflect language changes and oftentimes removal of passive voice. One policy, which had been a modified policy for MCPS, was updated by the VSBA, and our policy is no longer modified. It falls completely in line with the model policy with the VSBA. And one policy, Policy J.N., relating to student fees, fines, and charges, well, will actually need to be updated regularly because it requires us to specify what our fees and charges are for students. Five policies that were discussed that were not part of the V S B A model policies were related to health care in our schools. They were not previously modified but are going... Will need to be modified. They all relate to CPR, first aid, medication, bodily fluid, communicable diseases. The first reason they need to be modified is because they didn't reflect current best practices as determined by our nursing staff. And the second reason they're being modified is so that policies and parent forms would be together and easier to navigate by parents. So those are the five policies that were not originally modified, but we're requesting that they be modified when we vote next week. Now, I mean, next School Board meeting.
Thank you. And will that be on the consent agenda or regular?
It will be on the consent agenda.
Okay, very good. Any questions from the board on that? All right. Next up on our discussion agenda is Student Services. Dr. Chavice Thomas, our Executive Director of Student Services, will provide an update on truancy and chronic absenteeism in Manassas City Public Schools.
Good evening. Oh, 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 wait a minute. That's a little bit too loud and excited. Hold on. Good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, Dr. Newman, members of the board, and our M C P S family. Thank you for the opportunity to share the foundational work and the progress we've made towards attendance this year. First, I'd like to recognize four unsung heroes and the muscles behind building our attendance practices. I'd like to recognize Larry Gilligan. He works with our attendance efforts at Osborne High School. We have Cassandra Walker. She works with our Metz families. We have Marisol Lopez. She is not with us today, but I'd like to recognize her. She works with Round, Dean, and Hayden. And we have Janet Torres. She works with Weems, Baldwin Elementary, and Baldwin Intermediate. They are immensely committed to our parents, students, and improving attendance. And I would like to publicly thank them for their service. In an effort to understand their critical role in addressing truancy, I've included their essential duties. First and foremost, they are sure that the state compulsory attendance laws are enforced. They meet with parents and students to develop attendance contracts. They definitely refer the qualified personnel, and they monitor terms of the attendant contracts. And they... When they monitor and they refer qualified school and community resources as needed. At the school level, they meet with the parents in a truancy conference before filing a petition. And then they move to a more compliance focus. Our attendance officers file truancy petitions against students in either Supervision and Services. They represent the school system or the school division in truancy cases in juvenile court. And they investigate reports of students not enrolled in school. They submit required and relevant and related... Reports related to truancy with knowledge that such reports may be used as evidence in court. They testify on behalf of the Commonwealth when probation officers file violation of probation charges related to truancy. Our goal is to shift the paradigm of... From truancy to chronic absence to improve attendance. Truancy counts as unexcused absences, and it has an emphasis on compliance. Whereas chronic absence counts all attendance or all absences. And it emphasizes the academic impact of missed days. So two facts resonate with me when we talk about emphasizing academic impact on missed days. Studies show that students who miss days or who are chronically absent in kindergarten, first, and second grade are less likely to read on grade level by third grade. Also, more interesting... It's more interesting that by high school, regular attendance is a better dropout indicator than test scores. So what is chronic absenteeism? Chronic absenteeism is when students miss 10% or more of the school year. And it includes our excused absences, our unexcused absences, and our out-of-school suspensions. It excludes students who are enrolled with us less than 50% of the school year, students receiving homebound instruction, and that's homebound instruction at any point in a school year, in-school suspension, and disciplinary alternative placements. So for example, we've been in school for 141 days to date, and students with 14 or more absences to date are considered chronically absent. Chronic absenteeism is one of our indicators for accreditation, and our goal is to maintain a Level One. So our goal is to ensure that less than 15% of our entire division or our entire student body miss less than 18 days of the school year. Just a quick statistic statistic. Before the pandemic, 8 million U.S. students were deemed chronically absent. During the 2021 school year, at least 10 million of our U.S. students missed 10% or more of the school year. And states, including Virginia, reported that chronic absenteeism has doubled since 2021 over the past three years. So what I'm trying to say is that this is a national or nationwide concern. Here is an example of the attendance calls by school. It's done a little bit differently than done in the past. All schools excluding Osborne High School receive two calls when students are absent. Osborne High School now receives four calls to parents when students are absent. All parents still receive the 6:00 PM phone call. And this is just an example of the report times and when the calls go out throughout the division. We had to stagger the times because of the different times that students report to school. All of our schools have formed attendance teams and shifted the paradigms from old practices such as only monitoring unexcused absences to our new practices. So now we have attendance teams at every school that meet regularly and that are goal and action-oriented. They coordinate schools' multi-tiered strategy to reduce chronic absence, and they use qualitative and quantitative data to understand attendance challenges at their school. Super excited because they connect families and students to needed resources, and they monitor progress. Having a clear understanding of the reasons why students miss school is a part of our foundational work, and there are five universal reasons why students miss school. And they are academic issues, mental health, relationships, responsibilities outside of schools, and others. And other. However, the State of Virginia refers to the root causes in four categories. Our teams collect these data in order to provide a multi-disciplinary team approach and individualized approach to address our attendance. The State of Virginia recognizes four main causes. There are barriers, aversion, disengagement, and misconceptions. So where we come into place in the work that we're doing here in Manassas is that when we think about barriers, those are our family liaisons and our social workers. They're working on poor transportation. They're working with trauma. They're working with inequitable access to needed services. Aversion, that's when our content specialists come into play, our special educators, our ESOL experts, our counselors, and again, our social workers. When we think about disengagement, we think about our on-time graduation to engage students to come... Our on-time graduation specialists and our counselors. And I'd like to recognize our on-time graduation specialist, Cherish Skinker. And when we think about our misconceptions, we think about our attendance officers. They're out there doing the work. And the misconception is that, oh, two days a month won't hurt my child. Oh, my absences are okay because they're excused. So we have our attendance officers out there just helping parents and our communities be aware of the attendance. So we're all doing the work, and our administrators are doing the work as well. Conversely, it's just as important to understand why students come to school and record... I mean, that they recognize why they don't come to school, and we understand why they'd rather be at school. So these data are used to reflect and audit our climate and culture at each school. So why do students attend school? We have relationships. That's number one. Students attend school because of relationships. And we all know that every student deserves a champion. Learning, students enjoy specific classes and like to be challenged. And when I think about that, I think about high expectations for all. So there's reasons why... Research shows why students come to school, and I'm super excited because all of these reasons are already aligned to our Manassas City strategic plan. Here is an example of a root cause worksheet that some of our schools are using as a resource to understand why students are not coming to school, being able to create interventions for these students, strategies, and recommended additional resources. So this is a really quick way to comprehensively look at all of the reasons why students are not coming to school so we can give a more individualized approach to our students. Again, this is a valuable resource to understand the root causes of individual attendance issues. Super excited. All of our schools have an attendance protocol, and they follow the protocol to address attendance immediately. Here is an example of the attendance protocol at Osborne High School where there's a shared accountability to improve attendance with our two deans leading the work and leading the charge. So at this time, I'd like to recognize Mr. Juan Lopez and Wanda Vincente. These two individuals at Osborne, they're holding countless student support team meetings, which are SST meetings. They're developing contracts. They're monitoring contracts. They're referring families to outside resources. And so I just want to publicly thank them for their invaluable contribution to this work. If you look closely at the protocol, home visits are being made by our counselors and by our family liaisons and by our social worker, Joanne Gaynor. And then letters are sent home when there's five unexcused absences, seven unexcused absences, and 10 unexcused absences. And when we get to eight to 10 absences, that's where Mr. Gilligan kind of steps in and works his magic. And he starts to knock on doors, and he and Cherish Skinker, they team up, and they're knocking on doors, and we're really trying to make a difference to combat our chronic absenteeism. So all of our schools, all elementary, intermediate, and Osborne, we have an attendance protocol that we follow to address our attendance. Tier One Strategies. Super excited about our Tier One Strategies. I'd like to share with you that we are currently identifying and implementing Tier One Strategies for all students. Tier One Strategies are focused on what research says why students come to school. So in order to improve attendance, you have to have a tiered approach that begins with prevention. So through our training, we've learned that implementing attendance requires a tiered approach. We will continue to work on and identify strategies for our Tier Two and our Tier Three students who require more intensive support. So when we look here at our Tier One Strategies, these are some examples to just recognizing good and improved attendance, educating and engaging our students and families, monitoring our attendance data, just things that we do that create a good culture that makes students want to come to school. I also wanted to add that as we create our Manassas City Schools tiered intervention approach, we're going to add things like celebrating attendance and being committed to the awareness, making sure everyone knows attendance counts. Tier Two Strategies are what we do for our students that have more chronic absence, where they've already missed 10% of the year, and they're moving on to 19% of the school year, being out. And then here, Tier Three Strategies. Again, this is an example, but this is something that we're working on to create, to have in place by next year. So my goal is, if someone says, what do we do for our Tier Two students in Manassas or Tier Three students, we already have that tiered approach available to put on our website so everyone can know what we're doing to assist our students with coming to school. I'd like to share some commitments for creating a comprehensive systems of supports in our schools. So proud that our leaders in all of our buildings are committed to all of these bullets. One thing that is dear to me that they're engaging our students and our families, and they are monitoring our attendance, and they recognize good and improved attendance without just focusing on perfect attendance. You know, back in the day, we would just focus on perfect attendance, and we would not highlight students with that good attendance or that improved attendance. But I can tell you that we are recognizing there's some great things going on in our schools to promote this. We are using evidence-based strategies for creating a culture of attendance. Again, as you can see throughout the presentation, we're using these five strategies to build all of our work around this evidence base. We got it from some of our training, and we're excited about it because it helps us have a framework. So when I think about, again, recognizing good and improved attendance, I think about Ms. Huffman at Weems. They have this thing called a glow party, and kids are just running around crazy. I was running around crazy. Ms. Huffman was running around crazy. And then at the end of the party, Ms. Huffman said, "I'm so proud of you." It was a lot of kids in there. She says, "I'm so proud of you. In order to come to the glow party, you have to continue with your improved attendance, and I'm very proud of you." So I'm going to give kudos to Ms. Huffman. Then at... For B, to engage parents. These are our family liaisons, and our social workers are working overtime as far as being a hero with this strategy, engaging our students and our parents. And then for C, monitoring attendance data and practice. Our intermediate schools, they are definitely rock stars with this. Dr. Frischkorn and Juliette Finnegan, they are pulling reports. They're monitoring students. And Dr. Frischkorn even met with over 200 students to talk about attendance and the importance of coming to school. So that was very impressive. And then we provide early outreach. We are even reaching out to our pre-K parents, even though the pre-K parents are not included in our final calculation for accreditation. But our pre-K students are going to be our kindergartners next year. And we found that a lot of our pre-K parents or students, we want to make sure that they understand the importance of coming to school because we need to make sure that they understand and form that habit early. We address our attendance early, as early as two absences, and that goes along with our personalized early outreach. We have our contracts also that affords us the opportunity to have a more personalized approach. And our deans are super, super rock stars with that. And they're awesome with this strategy as far as that early outreach and developing those contracts. I promise you, we have participated in every V D O E and every Attendance Works personal professional development opportunity. Our attendance officers, select principals, and I are completing this V D O E series. It's a 13-part series recommended by the V D O E. It helps us, again, get our strategies and make sure we're on the same... Just doing the right work, and we're doing targeted and efficient work. Our deans have also attended countless webinars and professional development opportunities. So this is a year where we are learning. We're getting all of the professional knowledge and the growth. We're ensuring that everything we're doing is aligned to the Virginia Department of Education. Right here. So something's out of line, but that's okay. I got it. Truancy Dashboard. It's upcoming. It's exciting. We are purchasing a truancy dashboard, which is customized for us to make truancy identification, notification, and intervention documentation efficient. Right now, we're pulling this report, that report. We're reading this report, that report. But once we get our hands on this truancy dashboard, we're going to be able to pull up a dashboard, customize it the way we want to customize it in Manassas City Schools. So for instance, our strategies would be our Tier Two, Tier Three strategies, such as conferences, how many home visits, how many contracts, how many letters, if there's a social work referral. So we can build this dashboard how we want it. We can push a button. We can see how many students are considered truant to date, and then it'll show all of the interventions that are being... That have been implemented for each student. So that's something that we're working on. We're going to push the button for this. Right, Dr. Casada? And we're going to be ready. We're going to be ready. Right, Mr. Gilligan? So I'm going to go back. We have set attendance goals. We've had 14 goals for this year. I'm proud to tell you that out of the 14 goals, we're already making progress towards all of the 14 goals. And I plan to have accomplished all of these goals this year. As you look at the goals, all of them kind of start with learn and understand. So while we are taking action, it's very important for us to learn and understand. That's germane to our work. So before we delve in and we continue to take action, which we are, we have to learn and understand. and understand and that's just really my goal this year. Finally, we are participating in Engage Virginia. It is an initiative launched by the Virginia Department of Education where attendance will be our main focus. Now, there are some extra examples of some things that Engage Virginia will offer, but we have decided to refer all of our students with unexcused absences and then there's other supports that will be available to them. So, as you see here for Engage Virginia, we have coaches that may, that will reach out to the students by phone, email, text messages, and provide more support. So, I'm excited about Engage. We want to see how it's going to work, but it is going to be that extra layer of support that we're going to provide our students. I'm going to leave you with a quote that warms my heart because it supports my optimism that we're doing some targeted and meaningful work in Manassas for our students and our families. And it's by Hetty Change, who is the Executive Director of Attendance Works. It's a nonprofit organization that's working closely with the VDOE. And the quote just says, "Chronic absentee, chronic absence is a solvable problem. Students are more likely to attend regularly so they can gain the knowledge and skills to exceed in schools where parent schools and communities work together to create a comprehensive systems of report, of support." Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Very thorough report. Appreciate it very much. Helps us understand all the efforts that are underway. Do we have any comments or questions from the board? Mrs. Brooks?
I want to thank you and your team for all the hard work you're putting into this. I also want to commend you for this wonderful approach of the tiers where you're starting with tier one of, you know, make kids want to come to school. You know, that's, school's supposed to be the place where you go and you experience life and adventure. So, focusing on that and then hitting the other steps at the same time, I think, is a wonderful idea and I commend you for it.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Sure. All I have to say is wow. I love that this is systemized, operationalized. This is going to work. Thank you so much for all this effort and this hard work.
Thank you.
I do have one question. So, who's working with Mayfield?
Did I miss Mayfield? Miss Walker? Yeah, Cassandra Walker.
I was just curious. But fantastic report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Oh, I apologize. I left off Mayfield. I see that now. I apologize. Okay? Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
So, I echo my colleagues. Thank you. This is a great report. As you know, this is a major area of community concern.
Oh, yes.
And a area of my own personal concern as well.
Yes, ma'am.
So, on that, I have a few questions for you.
Okay.
Tell me more about attendance contracts. What are they? What do they do? How are they enforced?
Okay, so, we use the root cause analysis to understand why the student is not coming to school. At Osborne, it's usually a SST meeting. And during the SST meeting, which stands for Student Support Team Meetings, we have the students come in and we talk about their attendance. We allow the parents and the students to share reasons why they have not come to school. So, from those reasons as to why they are not attending schools, we put interventions in place and things like what the school, what we can do as a school to assist you and things that the student can do and things that the parent can do. I will tell you that a lot of times that I've, the times that I have attended these meetings, they talk about where they are, they're behind, or they don't feel like they can catch up. And then, so this contract will kind of help put things in places, not punitive. It's some things that, okay, so this is, you need to come to Saturday school, the learning seminar on Saturdays, or you need to come to, you know, tutoring, or you need to ask for extra help. So, the contract is in place to ensure that they improve their attendance. So, the contract is like, we are agreeing on these things. You have identified these particular things that are preventing you from coming to school. And then, these are the things that we want to see in actionable steps for your attendance to improve. And I think Mr. Gilligan can tell you if the, if they don't adhere to the contract at some point, and Ms. Walker can tell you as well, then that's when we kind of move towards a more intensive meeting. And then, at some point, our attendance officers unfortunately have to file a petition. Did I leave out something about the contract? Oh, okay.
Hi, court members. Sorry, no, our attendance contracts are really, we try and do it where it's 30 days. We try to have it exactly where the students are, we're addressing their issues. A lot of our students do violate them and then we put them on another contract and we keep working through it. We try and get them at their word to admit what they're working on and then try to stick with that and fix it. It's not a fix-all-for-all students, I gotta be honest with you, nor is it in place for all of our students. It's individualized as we go through it.
And our truancy dashboard will allow us to see how many contracts are in place. It will allow us to monitor the contracts and to see, you know, that truancy dashboard is going to be customized and everything is at our fingertips and we'll put that as an action step for attendance.
I did notice in the protocols that, for Osborne's attendance protocols-
Yes.
-that the formation of attendance contract was one of the things that is eventually triggered, but not everybody is on an attendance contract.
No, not necessarily.
And why would a student not be put on an attendance contract?
All right, so, it's an intervention, okay? So, not interventions work for every student. We try and find the students that it would require. A lot of our students, we use it anyway. When we're sitting in a meeting and talking with them, we will talk about it and we'll have them fill it out, we'll have them sign it and their parents sign and agree to the, to what it is. We give them a copy of it. Generally, that is about it for the contract. Not every student gets it. We actually listed that on the protocol as one of the interventions that we go to it a little bit more than normal, you know? I mean, that's one of our top interventions.
I'm just trying to understand what the rubric is. This student gets an attendance contract and this one doesn't.
So, it is individualized and case by case because what works for one student to come to school and what's stopping them from coming may be different for the next student and actually push it the other way where it doesn't work at all, okay? Yep.
Sorry to interject. Some of the students may come in and they meet that attendance threshold, but there may be a mental health issue, a student may be pregnant, something like that nature, where a contract may not be applicable in their case where a social service or a social worker may be more supportive.
I brought backup.
Thank you for those answers.
Yes, thank you. So, I also have questions about the attendance calls.
Yes.
So, these are automated calls that-
Yes.
-are sent to the phone numbers on record.
Yes.
And what happens if there's no, is there anything that happens if there's no answer?
So, there is a report that we can pull to show how many people hung up, how many people blocked us. We can see, you know, how many answering machines. We can see how many working, non-working numbers. So, initially, in the beginning of the year, you know, we were very diligent about pulling these reports, sending them to the schools so the registrar or the admin associate can make those changes in Power School. So, that's one area that we're going to get a lot better with, you know, trying to get those reports done to just kind of see how many calls are actually being successful. When I was really monitoring the calls in the beginning of the school year, when we started sending all of these calls, we had about an 83% to 85% success rate. So, if you're asking what the follow-up is, that's the follow-up and I will tell you that that would be something that we would need to continue to strengthen.
So, that's a work in progress.
Absolutely.
Okay. We all like working in progress.
Absolutely.
So, I did notice in comparing how our old strategy was shifting to our new strategy, the old strategy included was focused on the individual and individual family and that was not on the new paradigm.
Right.
The new paradigm was much more use trend data to identify subgroups of students-
Right.
-and yada, yada. And so, I just want to check in and make sure we're not, I mean, based on Mr. Gilligan's answer to my, you know, about the attendance contract, we're not losing track of the individual.
No. So, what that means is that it was just instead of what Ms. Brooks said. So, now, we're working on our climate and our culture and tier one strategies for all students. We want a welcoming environment for all students. We want our schools to be a magical place for all students. The old attendance shift was we're just focusing on that one person and not looking at our practices and not looking at if we're challenging students and not looking at if we, you know, are holding, you know, building relationships with students. So, that's what that means, not looking at individual students, but taking a look at ourselves and auditing our practices and auditing our climate and our culture to improve instruction for all students. And Mr. Guafella and I talk about it all the time, that kids come to school when they're challenged and when kids want to learn and when there's some exciting quality instruction going on in the classrooms.
Okay. Thank you. That clarifies that for me.
Yes, ma'am.
I do, you know, I'm all aboard, you know, early identification, early cheap glow parties and stuff like that. I'm all about that. I am wondering about when we do need to get to a punitive consequence.
Yes.
Do we ever get there? What does that look like?
Oh, yeah, we get there. So, our attendance officers, especially Ms. Walker and Mr. Gilligan, they are in court how many times a week?
Probably once, twice a week.
Once or twice a week, they're in court. And so, when it gets there, then they file the petition and then the juvenile court takes it from there.
And what-
Can I go into it a little bit?
Sure.
So, that's the punitive side. We exhaust every single method that we have at the school, everything that we have at our hands, everything we can use between social workers or outside services prior to filing a court. I, let me give you a number. I filed on 27 families this year. That's not a lot. It doesn't seem like a lot when we're talking about our numbers, but it's, it's got to be very specific for that person to, I've exhausted everything and before I go in front of a judge, I need to have what I want out of that. What can we get? You know, what can I get the judge to do for us that we couldn't get the student or the family to do? And that's where we try and rely on the court system for that.
And I know we do not control the court system, but just out of curiosity, what does the court, what's the menu of options that the court generally offers in terms of attendance support?
So, one of the things, like, we actually represent Manassas City Schools, which is a little different than some jurisdictions. Generally, we will be the one sitting at the table across from two attorneys trying to plead for what we want out of it. So, they can do anything from assigning probation, following up on their attendance, keep a track of what they're doing at that point. They could actually put them out at Master JDC for being detained. They could put them on ankle monitoring. Or generally, what I get out of it, what I push for a little bit is if I have a family that's not using outside services and we've recommended them and they're not getting the treatment that they need, they will assign it through the court, which pushes that a lot further. If the parent is not doing that, they're not following through, that is one of the biggest things that I get out of court, to be honest with you. You know, if we need to do a drug treatment, if they need to plan something like that or if they need to get some other counseling that they're not pursuing, that's what we use that for a lot more.
I noticed a lot in the protocols that we, you know, consider home visit, consider home visit, consider home visit. I never saw do home visits. So, I'm wondering where-
So, it's not, it's not that a student has missed seven days, Mr. Gilligan goes to the house and knocks on the door, okay? So, it is a case by case. And it's, are we getting in touch with the family? Is the family just not returning our phone calls after we leave a message? Mr. Lopez, like, about 12 times will leave a message, just can't get anywhere. He will send a request to me to actually go out and do a visit at that point there and I'll go out and knock on the door. What I find from time to time, the families don't live at that address anymore. A lot of our addresses were addresses when they enrolled in elementary school or even middle school and they may have moved somewhere else. Our families do move around a lot. So, it's my, our job generally to locate that family at that point and re-engage conversations, see where they're at and get them back in school or just get them to the table with us to meet and find out what the problem is so we can solve that. Okay?
And I have some questions about the truancy dashboard.
Yes.
What are we using now?
So, we have Power School and there are a plethora of reports that we can pull in Power School, different summaries of the log entries and the efforts that we've, because that's what they use when they go to court, they pull certain reports, but it's pulling at least two or three different reports because you're pulling your log entries, like when you called the parent, what was the outcome? You're pulling the, how many absences they have and you're pulling how many unexcused absences. So, the truancy dashboard is a plug-in for our Power School and it will give us a one-stop shop. We can push a button, we can customize it so we can figure out how many contracts, how many home visits, how many letters, how many, you know, that we've had. So, right now, we're just using a hodgepodge of things to kind of collect the data that we're looking for, all in Power School. But this is going to help us just push a button. It'll tell you currently how many students are truant. It'll show everything that's being done for those kids or those students who are truant at the time. And so, we can see where we stand. It'll, you know, we can put in how many letters we've sent, how many meetings we've had, and everything is out of glance so you don't have to read through a report.
I see. So, my next question was going to be, have we considered any improvements to our internal system? But it sounds like this is an improvement.
I think this would be a major improvement. There's some other very expensive things out there, but they work, you know, well as well. I've gone to a couple demonstrations while I was oohing and ahing, but then when he gave me the price, I say, "Oh, okay." But with this truancy dashboard, it's cost-effective and it's going to give us what we need.
So, going, moving on to Engage Virginia, this was not in your presentation and I just want to give you an opportunity to say, how much is it costing the Manassas City taxpayers for us to use?
Zero.
Thank you.
Zero. So, I'm excited about that. The Engage Virginia is zero and we're taking advantage of that. We were one of the first ones to sign up and Dr. Casada and I are working on uploading all of our students. We have set the criteria for our unexcused absences because I've once found out that we have a limit on how many students we can refer. So, we're working on that and it's $0 to our division.
So, would they be using our new dashboard or do they have-
That's something separate.
They're separate.
That's going to be separate. We upload the students that we want them to contact. I have given, I will give them the criteria. Dr. Casada and I need to just, I'll tell them, they did ask me the other day, how many students did I think we were going to refer? And then, from there, there are other things that will come out of this relationship with these coaches.
Okay. And somebody, though, related with MCPS is going to be monitoring, I mean, it's not like we're going to send these kids to Engage and then at the end of the year, we're going to find out how they did, like-
No, that would be me. That would be me and Mr. Guafella. We're going to, I'm going to, to monitor the secondary and Mr. Guafella is going to monitor our elementary school. We're the point of contact for them so we can kind of see. And I, we haven't gotten to that stage as to how we're going to know how they're doing or how many successful calls or how many successful cases. I'm not even sure what the criteria would be for a successful case because parents can deny the service. So, once we get up and rolling, I'll make sure that I have a monthly, because I'm excited about it. I'm eager, I'm excited, and so I can't wait to just see how this is going to pan out. And we only have about a month or so of school, but to go ahead and get it rolling now so we can work out the kinks and then be ready for it in the fall.
All right. And as my last question-
Okay.
If in a strictly hypothetical scenario-
Okay.
-there was a full-time employee position that appeared that could be slotted into our attendance effort, what in your opinion would be the most impactful position and why? Hypothetical.
Can I tell you on a different date? Because I think it's, we all play, we're all a team and we all have a critical role. So, it's kind of hard to say because I think we're all valuable. So, I can't say we need more attendance officers, but then I can say maybe someone at the division level to kind of help oversee. But then, I can say maybe another social worker to kind of help with some of these home, you know, visits. So, we have liaisons at every school, but we have to really look at our entire team to see, you know, who can, can make more of a difference. I'm not, I'm not-
This is-
I'm not totally prepared to answer that.
All right. Think about it.
I will think about it. I will think about that. But I think that as a team, we're all strong, and we all have things to bring to the table. So I would have to think about who I would need another of. All of them, really, okay? A whole lot, all of them. Another social worker, another, someone on our attendance team. We're all doing the work, because it's a lot of work to manage chronic absenteeism and to ensure that students are coming to school, because each day, the numbers are growing and growing and growing.
Okay. Well, I wanted to thank you for your detailed presentation.
Thank you.
The whole team for your answers to my questions.
Thank you.
I will let whoever wants to go next go.
Mrs. Ball?
Thank you very much. I want to commend your efforts.
Thank you.
Even before we get Engage and the dashboard, I know that this has been a lot of work, and I can't help but feel that it's making a positive impact. I am a little bit curious, I guess excited, to see, you know, benchmarks, some stats.
Yes.
I wonder if, I know it's a sensitive subject, but, you know, I mean, some aggregated data to see, you know, just what we've already done. And I was thinking that it had to be better, but then the last thing you just said was that it's getting to be more and more. So are we, you know, I know that what we have coming is important. Do you know when we're launching the dashboard?
So we just have to... Dr. Casada?
The PEO has been submitted.
The purchase order is in process, so it seems like it's a quick... Because it plugs right into our current system, so it seems like we should be able to do that. I'm sure we have to get some more training, so we should be able to get that up and running pretty fast, and I'll keep you posted on. But the purchase order has already been submitted for this dashboard.
Okay. So we are looking to do the dashboard and Engage?
Yes.
Before the end of the school year?
This school year, yes.
Okay. Well, I agree we have a solvable problem.
Yes.
And I think it looks like we have the team in place to, you know, make change happen. So I am excited to hear as soon as you have statistics that you can share with us, just to prove to everyone that we've got what it takes to make a change.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ball. Vice Chair Stevens?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Just a couple of quick questions. When you're talking about the attendance protocol, Slides 16 and 17, is that consecutive absences or cumulative absences you're talking about? Cumulative. So it can be first quarter, third quarter, second quarter?
For the most part, yes.
Okay. Okay. And then you're talking about your attendance teams. Can you give us an idea of who the members of your attendance teams are at each school? Not specific names, but roles?
Absolutely. So they differ from school to school. However, what we're trying to do is be more consistent. But to answer your question for this year, we have counselors, we have some teachers, we have an administrator, we have, some schools have the family liaison, some schools have the social worker, some schools have multiple counselors. Some schools have small teams. I know at Osborne, it's a huge team. Who's really quickly, who's on the team at Osborne? Because it's about nine or 10 people.
It's actually all the admin. The admin, I have two counselors, two department chairs, a social worker, the deans, Ms. Kinkers, they are our on-time graduation coordinator. And we just had a meeting today, as a matter of fact, so we just left that to it.
Each school is different. So what I like to do, and my goal is to make it consistent, where we have the same key people at every school doing the work, and we're all doing the same thing, so those are the attendance teams. And they meet, some meet weekly, some meet bi-weekly, some meet monthly. So that would be a goal next year, to also streamline that, where we meet more often. Research says that we should be meeting at least every two weeks, so we can, you know, stay on top of any attendance concerns.
And then my next question is, we have a population of students that comes to school...
Yes.
But leaves early, or comes to school late.
Yes.
And they are not considered part of our chronic absenteeism, but sometimes they're missing as much, if not more, more school than their peers who are absent all day. How do we handle that population?
So that would be something that we would have to incorporate in our protocol and into our plan, and add that to our goals, to look at that. Because, you know, we also have, like you said, kids that's tardy. So it's just a big task. So of course, we would like to do it all, but we have to focus, like, on, we have to focus in pockets to give us the biggest bank at one time until we can start to bring in different layers. So to answer your question, we would have to bring that in at a certain time, where we're looking at students who are leaving early, like, looking at those students as well. Because they don't show up on the report unless they miss a whole day. Unfortunately, with the state of Virginia, you can come to school for one hour and still be counted as present. As long as you're present, you're present. And so that's how, so now we have to start looking at, once we get this and we get our protocol and it's solid and it's robust, then we can start looking at those students who are leaving early and coming, you know, leaving early and coming late. And then we can look at also those tardies and things like that, because that also impacts attendance, and it also has an impact on instruction.
Yeah, it does. Just a couple more quick questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Earlier this year, the E3 series did one on chronic absenteeism.
Yes.
I attended it, and before I attended it, I didn't realize what chronic absenteeism was.
Okay.
And so it was actually for someone who's a teacher, who's been a mom for several decades, and who's on school board, that I didn't realize what all chronic absenteeism entailed. Is this something we can do more often? Other kinds of presentations, like at PTO meetings, at school board meetings, at other school events? Because I think a lot of people don't understand that even if your child is homesick, that's a day, that's two days, that's three days onto that cumulative number. Do we have thoughts about doing more sessions like that?
That's absolutely. So I think I put it in one of my slides, just to create awareness. You have to create awareness. Mr. Flugrath, I think Juliette Finnegan, Dr. Frischkorn, they're putting things in their newsletter. Our attendance officers, they have the policy out, and they're talking to parents to help them understand. But yes, we need to create more awareness. We need to have them understand that even though your child is sick, they're chronically absent, because they're racking up more than 10% of the school year. And while the VDOE will recognize that students are going to be sick, we have to take chronic illnesses into account. They don't expect more than 15% of your students to miss more than 18 days out of a school year. So yes, I agree with you. I will add that also to my list. Rest assured that it'll get done, that we'll have more awareness, and parents can understand how attendance impacts their child's learning, also exactly what chronic absenteeism is, because it encompasses everything.
Yeah. And I wanted to say, thank you for mentioning block calls, because something I learned recently, and I think it's important to share, is that when you get those absence line calls and you block the calls, it blocks all calls from the school division, especially if there's an emergency. Recently, when there was an emergency at Osborne and Baldwin, some parents were upset that they didn't get the call, and it's because they had blocked the number.
Absolutely.
So when you block the call to avoid those absence calls, you're also blocking the calls for when there's an emergency.
Right.
So just a bit of information to share. Those are my only questions. Thank you. Thank you for being so thorough and for the job all of you do every day. It's not an easy job, and it takes a lot of hands, and it takes a lot of work, so thank you.
Thank you.
And my questions have been asked and answered very thoroughly, so thank you. Thank you, Dr. Thomas, for this presentation and to your whole team. We know that attendance matters, and it sounds like there's a very good plan in place, and we look forward to good results. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Okay, next up on our discussion agenda is the approved 2223 school year calendar. We need to discuss some possible adjustments to this calendar. Would, do you want to bring it up?
Yes. I would like to recommend to the board that we consider making May 26, which is a Friday, a division closed day, which will allow all of our staff to attend Osborne's graduation, which is at noon at Eagle Bank on the 26th of May.
Comments or questions from the board?
Quick question. Is this something we need to, that we are just discussing this night?
Just discussing.
Just discussing? Okay.
Unless you want to wave.
You can discuss tonight and approve in April, or you can make a couple people in the audience happy by waving, second reading, and approving tonight.
So, if, well, see if anybody wants to discuss.
We can always have a motion, well, wave second reading, motion, then discuss.
Chair, I move that we move second reading?
Second.
That we wave second reading?
That we wave second reading.
Second.
And approve the change to the 2223 school year calendar.
Still second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, seconded by Mrs. Brooks, to waive second reading and approve a change to the 202223 school calendar as a...
Student holiday?
As a, as a division closed on May 26, 2023. That's a Friday. It's graduation, held at noon, Eagle Bank Arena. Is there any discussion?
Want to add, I know Mike is talking. I know there's some staff that will have to help with graduation, and we'll make it up to them. We'll figure it out.
Is there enough seats in Eagle Bank to have the entire? There is. Okay, we highly encourage everyone to come.
Chair, I think it would be nice to have everyone there.
Okay.
Everyone who wants to attend.
Comments or questions? Any in agreement?
I do have a comment or question. Can we look into, for the 2324 school year, talking about adding Eid as a school holiday?
For which year?
For the 2324 school year.
We got a motion on the floor. So let's talk about that next.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries 7-0.
Okay. That works.
She's telling us to look at adding something for the next two.
We're pausing for a point of order here. Are you going to do it for this year? No. Okay, for next year. Okay. And then we can have a discussion about it. Mrs. Stevens, did you want to make a reminder?
I'd just like a reminder on the record that we will look at honoring the Eid holiday and discussing it for the next school year at a later date.
She's only asking for next year.
So it would just be an adjustment to the calendar for next year, and then move forward from there. But this isn't something we have to discuss or vote on at this time.
Thank you for that reminder. We will take that into account.
Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to piggyback on that request and see if we can make a motion or have a discussion about adding Eid holiday to this school year. So it would be for two, the two calendar years that we've already voted on.
And what is the date?
April 21st this year. April 21, 2022, a Friday.
Okay, so do you want to talk about this first, or you want to make a motion?
I mean, I'm open to discussion. We received some emails about it, so I think it's fair to talk about it.
We have received some interest and a petition that, from some students at Metz, that would like to celebrate the Eid holiday this year. I think that... For Mrs. Stevens? Okay. So I think we need to think about at what cost. So all of us on the board have identified student achievement as being a high priority. And we've just allowed one day to be dropped off the calendar and another day off the calendar. That's another day of learning. It's another day of eating lunch, breakfast, and dinner. And I'm just pointing this out for everybody to consider. Also, when we decide on a student, on a school calendar, it's made far in advance, and that is the time to discuss those things.
Chair, we did add it for next year's calendar.
What about this year?
Not this year, but, yeah, it's part of the next calendar.
Okay. That's good. And are you still talking about this year?
Yes.
Can you say why?
I would like to say because we have already added it to next year's calendar, and because there was a request by students, which I felt was probably not a precedent that we want to always follow, but I thought it was a magnanimous effort on their part. And I don't want to say the word snow days, but I believe that it's worth considering, because it's a move that we've already made for next year.
Thank you. And Dr. Newman, can you confirm for me that any student that celebrates Eid can have an excused absence if their parents write in and send a message?
Yes, ma'am.
And if there's any testing that day, would there be testing that day?
There will be no testing that day.
So Chair Seberg and Dr. Newman. So we just had a conversation about chronic absenteeism. So if a student is off to celebrate a religious holiday, does that count towards that buildup of absenteeism?
I'm seeing shaking heads, yes.
Okay, so that does have an impact?
For, do we just, do we have any principals in the audience right now?
You got one.
Okay. Mr. Flugrath, if you received a request from a student that wanted to have Eid off to celebrate with their family, would you grant that request if they were, had excessive absences?
Yeah, we would still grant any request for a holiday, religious holidays, excused absence. But it still would count towards their absences for the year, but it would be excused.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Mrs. Brooks?
Okay, I just want to speak to this for a moment. I have been completely torn on this topic since we received the email. I completely understand that this is a time of year for reflection, and, you know, it's a very important journey to make it to Eid, of course. And a lot of people really want to be with their families and their friends. But we also have to consider that we run a school division. And a school division is here to educate, and we did not have this in our calendar for this year. And although we would love to be able to do this, I think that, you know, for the future calendars, we already have the numbers, the days built in. This is taking away a day of academic, you know, achievement from the whole school division. And I think that at this point in the game, as much as we would like to be able to honor this request, it's not something that I think we can justify completely as much as we really want to. Because sometimes it's not just about what we want to do, it's about what we need to do. So that's where I've come to on this.
Very well said. Mrs. Williams, did you have a comment?
I, in addition, I think we need to consider, I don't know, the SOL schedule. This is...
I had asked for that, but since we're here tonight, you know, I'm looking for a healthy discussion. You know, I've researched Eid really starts at 4:00 PM on a Friday, the day of Eid.
It starts at sunrise on Friday.
Sundown?
Sunrise.
Well, the internet told me wrong then.
Yeah.
I think this needs to be definitely further researched and discussed before we bring it up here again. I mean, we could put it on a, discuss it next.
It'll be Tuesday before the Friday.
We only have one meeting.
Oh, wow.
I mean, if it came to it, we could waive second reading, if it came to it. Could we? Oh, we'd miss it.
And another...
21st, isn't it?
And your meeting is 25th.
Oh.
You could always have a special, you could have a special meeting.
Again, I just wanted to make sure that we were able to discuss it, if nothing else for the kids.
It's definitely worthy of a discussion because of the passion that the students brought. I'm not sure they understand that they have every right to take that day off anyway. And maybe we can ask Mr. Morris to make it very clear to students that that's totally acceptable and encouraged for them to celebrate.
I also wanted to have the discussion and be able to, you know, share our opinions. And I will be the first to say, I regret that we didn't catch it when we were making the calendar that we are in right now. But... And I do want to, I do want to say to the students at Metz who sent us the email, who did the petition, I commend you for that. That was you being citizens and advocating for your beliefs, and I really appreciate that, so. That was you being citizens and advocating for your, your beliefs and, and I really appreciate that, so.
Thank you. I'm going to go now to, uh, Ms. DeBee for further discussion.
So when it comes to this topic, I think it is really important to recognize these holidays mainly because it is one of the major holidays that a lot of students do, um, practice at Osborne and at all the schools within our district. But at the same time, I think it's also important to look at how that's affecting the schedule we're already in, especially because of how close we are to that date already. I don't remember, I think maybe we have one more meeting, probably before that date. So I feel like yeah, we don't? So I feel like as much as I personally would want it to happen, I'm not completely sure if it would be the brightest decision just because I don't know how it would affect people preparing for SOL testing, people preparing for A P exams, just preparation for things that are coming towards the end of the school year, just because of how close it is. If this was brought up possibly like last month or the month before, I'd probably feel differently about that. But since we're so close to that date already, I feel like this might be a difficult thing to do.
Well, we very much appreciate your reflection and discussion on that matter, thank you very much. Shall I move along?
I think it's been discussed.
Thank you. Next up under student achievement, proposed regulation two A R instructional materials. Dr. Laura Goldson will present a proposed regulation to us.
Good evening Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, Dr. Newman and members of the board. Tonight I want to review the proposed regulation that outlines the process of implementation of, uh, policy I I A, um, around instructional materials. So Senate Bill six five six, uh, was passed in April of two thousand and twenty-two and that amended the Code of Virginia and directed the V D O E to develop a model policy that ensured parental notification of any instructional materials that might include sexually explicit content. It also asked us to provide information, guidance and procedures and standards for identifying those materials and providing, um, a process for parental review. So in January, uh, you, the board, adopted the V S B A revisions to I I A and I I A B uh, to meet those requirements. Uh, this evening, I'm going to review the components of the regulation, including materials review and selection, parental notification, um, adding a statement into our core syllabi and then the process for parents to request alternative materials. So our teachers engage in collaborative planning, uh, through the P L C process, a cycle that works, you've heard a lot about that. So in the course of the planning process, uh, teachers will collaborate with their learning team uh, when selecting materials for lesson instruction. This is something we do every day. Any materials that may include content that's considered sexually explicit under I I A or I I A B, which is for supplemental materials, um, will be evaluated by that C L T, um, or with a selected group of content teachers. Uh, teachers and teaching teams, uh, will use a checklist to determine the need to provide parental notification per the M C P S policy. Uh, school principals, uh, will provide parental notification within thirty days if instructional materials are selected that meet that criteria of com- of containing the explicit material. So the principal or the designee, the principal, whoever is, uh, the principal designates with the, um, with the job of creating, um, maintaining and publishing on the school website, they'll put, um, a spreadsheet that has the following information for parents to view. It'll, um, have the school name, the grade level, what's the course title, the title of the material, what format is that? Is it a book? Is it a video? Is it a photograph? Page number, and then they're going to provide a link, um, to any credible online review with the suggested age and appropriateness, if that's available. And then they'll also provide the name of an acceptable alternative material, uh, for the assignment. And this document will be a live link to a spreadsheet or a P D F that is updated as needed. So additionally, parents, families will be notified thirty days in advance of the use of instructional materials that meet this criteria through a letter from the principal. Students and families have a right to request alternative texts or materials. And they can request that by submitting a form, a request for alternative instructional resource. And they, um, need to do that fourteen days in advance of lesson instruction. And parents can change their mind, they can change their mind, um, change that decision at any time by, uh, just alerting the principal. Uh, our core syllabi must include a statement regarding sexually explicit content when lesson instruction that will include these materials or that meet that criteria of the policy are going to be included. This core syllabi can either be just the actual document that is a syllabi, but we could also consider the school G course. Sometimes a syllabi is more of a live, um, environment. And so this statement would be, um, included if there were any materials that met that criteria. I just want to reiterate that Senate Bill six five six says that local school jurisdictions are required to establish clear procedures ensuring alternative instructional materials are provided in a non-punitive manner for any student whose parents so requests. Parents have the right to request that their child be provided alternative resource materials to continue instruction within the curriculum. And they can do that by submitting a form, the request for alternative instructional resource, which will be, um, as part of the regulation in our board docs. But it'll also be a live link on all of the school websites. We will make that, um, abundantly apparent to, um, any parent that, uh, you know, asks us, asks us about that, we can send them a link or there is an actual paper form that we can fill out. And again, parents can change their minds, they can change their decision with respect to the use of those alternative instructional materials. I have, uh, training materials ready to go for the schools that have all of those documents. That I've talked about, the checklist, the form and things like that. So any questions, how can I help?
Mr. Hollingsworth.
I'm sorry, I think I missed something. So if the parent sends in a form, uh, pulling their kid from the material, would they have to fill out a different form in order, if they changed their mind? Or they, they can just call in and change their mind?
No, they should, I'm sorry, thank you, they should call, they should call and talk to the principal, leave a message for the principal, send an email. The best practice would be to send that, um, in written form.
Absolutely, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Oh, Ms. DeBee.
Hi.
Um, for example, if like for a student who's taking dual classes, I know the syllabus, especially for Nova, usually tends to be different. And they usually see you as an adult since you're taking the dual course. So do parents still have the, I guess, ability to request different materials for students, even if they're taking a dual class? Or let's say the student is over eighteen?
That's a good question, Ms. DeBee. Um, I'd like to, uh, defer my answer until I can do some research and then I'll send you an email. Okay.
That's a fantastic question.
Mm-hmm. That's a higher order thinking question. Vice Chair Stevens.
Thank you, Dr. Goldson. I know we've had lots of robust conversations about this because this is a, if, I don't want to say it's a big shift, but it's a very big piece of legislation that's very, that was very consequential. And putting together the policies and the regulation, we have to do this just right, to get it right.
Absolutely.
Um, and so far you all have done a great job. Um, I just have some questions for clarification. So instructional materials and then the, um, support materials, and I'm sorry, I'm, I'm forgetting what the official title is. Those are the materials that are used for instruction. But let's say students bring in materials from home, let's say they bring in a paperback book that's for leisure reading. It's not covered by the policy or regulation, correct?
Correct, no ma'am, that is, student-selected materials are not covered by the policy.
What about classroom libraries? Because it's a very big concern I've heard from teachers.
The policy specifically covers materials that are assigned by teachers for students that the students essentially need to go through those materials or reference those materials, read, um, to be able to complete an assignment. And that's why the alternate materials become so important. And it really focuses on the skills that are embedded in our Virginia standards. And so what we could, what we will be teaching, let's just use, um, you know, uh, English, uh, and we're talking about character development. You don't necessarily have to have text A
Right.
to discuss character development. And so we will provide alternative texts for that. But no, it doesn't cover classroom libraries. And those typically are provided for teachers so that students have access to choice materials if they don't have access to those materials at home.
Okay. And then my next question from you, for you, I'm sorry. Quite often as teachers, we use snips and pieces of text from published books. And let's say, for example, the teacher is using a paragraph as a model of a specific kind of paragraph they're teaching the students to write. And the paragraph in and of itself is not sexually explicit, but it comes from a book that has sexually explicit content. How does this policy, do the policy in this regulation impact that?
So to the letter of the law, we should be transparent and say this comes from this. But the instructional material that the teacher has selected is not the entire work, it is a selected paragraph. And so we can say this is the instructional material that we are using and it is not in fact sexually explicit or does not rise to the criteria that was, uh, you know, specifically outlined by the state. So, um, I would say that we would look at, in a C L T environment with teachers and a content specialist and say, let's read the part of the work that we're looking at. What is the purpose of that instruction? Does it or does it not rise to this criteria? It may come from a tome, you know, a piece of, of literature that in other sections does rise to this, to the criteria, but if we're not using the whole work. I think that that has to be the discussion of the C L T. And then they go through basically the rubric that says, does this or doesn't, doesn't it? And if it does meet that criteria, then you let the principal know and the principal will have an internally developed process to communicate that to the public.
Thank you. And then the rubric, the checklist that teachers will be using, the school staff will be using the rubric, is that the same for every, well, not for every school, but is that the same across all the elementary schools and then across both intermediate schools?
Yes ma'am.
So it, so regardless of what school you're at, you're going to be using the same tool to measure or to determine?
Yes, because it is a series of questions that you answer yes or no to.
Okay. And is there a resource teachers can go to that, and even parents can go to that gives us some guidance on content of books? Because it's very difficult to read everything. So is there a good resource that we can turn to?
So I would need to, to specifically give you the name of the resource, I'd need to get back with you because I don't know that off the top of my hand. And because there are a few different, right? Common Sense Media has some really good, um, links. But what we talked about in the, um, the spreadsheet that will be posted by principals, if in fact there were materials that met this criteria, it would need to be listed on this spreadsheet and then posted publicly on the website. One of the column headers on that spreadsheet is a link to something like a Common Sense Media or, um, a review that would talk about age appropriateness, why that specific content might be considered, um, to be, to meet this criteria. So, um, I can get back to you with those links, but something like Common Sense Media would be it.
And then the spreadsheet that will be developed by the principal, by the principal's designee, will those be shared amongst the schools so that they're not necessarily doing double the work?
So we have, I have developed, there is a template already developed with these column headers. And yes, it is a, uh, we will have a common, we will have one that is kept at central office. Those spreadsheets will be linked so that when they upload that or they add to it, it will also add to my copy.
Okay. Now how does this regulation and the legis- and, and the policy, how does that impact school libraries?
So school libraries have their own policy of, of, uh, process in which a parent can challenge or question the presence of, of a book in our libraries. This is a separate policy from that.
Okay, great. And then, and I hate to keep asking you questions because I know we've had these conversations. Our regulation, the regulation that you've developed with your team is based on the policy we adopted in January. And the policy came directly from the V S B A. It is not a M C P S unique policy and it is not a modified policy.
We did not modify that and you, uh, adopted it as written by V S B A.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, let me just see. Well, I think that's all my questions. Like I said, we've had lots of robust conversations. I really appreciate the due diligence and the hard work you all have done. And I do know you have to move very quickly. And so this will be ready to roll out twenty-three, twenty-four school year?
July one.
Okay.
Uh, but we will have the, uh, administration and then they will have the, uh, they will train their, um, C L Ts with, uh, actually a voiceover video presentation that I'm making so that we can make sure that there's consistency in training across our division. And then we've made all of the templates and, um, the checklists and the parent, parent letters and the spreadsheets and they're all ready to go. And so we will make sure that those, uh, that the schools have been provided that training, they have time to ask questions, establish internal processes prior to, uh, school year twenty-three, twenty-four.
Thank you, thank you for the work you've done and for the work everyone else has done, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Goldson.
That's all, I think.
That's all. No more questions. Okay, next up on our discussion agenda is Dr. Casada. Director of Strategic Improvement and Accountability will provide an update on the strategic plan with a focus on student academic success as well as an update on potential changes to the Virginia's accreditation system.
All right, we're going to see how this goes because I sound a little bit like a frog. So we're going to see how long I last, it's just allergies, I swear. Anyway, good evening Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, school board members and Dr. Newman. It's my privilege tonight to provide you with a brief update on student academic success in keeping with our promise to provide regular updates on the strategic plan. As a reminder, student academic success is the main focus of the strategic plan. As you know, we're committed to the four pillars that support our efforts to help students in achieving that success. Our previous presentations have focused on the pillars, tonight the focus is a little different. So tonight I will provide a brief update on some current data from the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. I'll share some information about the Virginia Growth Assessments, which were administered in the fall and winter to students in grades three through eight in reading and math. Also, in keeping with our focus on literacy, I'll provide some updates on PALS as well as the developmental word knowledge inventory. In addition, I'll provide some updates on the status of the state accreditation system as a result of changes that are currently being proposed by the governor and the Virginia Department of Education. Those changes are proposed to occur in phases with the first phase occurring for the twenty-four, twenty-five accreditation year, which is based on data from the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. However, there is also a few things that V D O E is proposing that could impact this year. I'll explain each of those. The data and accreditation slides all have references to key goals or components of the strategic plan at the bottom, just to show the connections. All right, first up, we're going to talk about the growth assessments. Beginning with the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, students in grades three through eight in Virginia public schools participate in what are called the Virginia Growth Assessments. In response to legislation passed by the Virginia General Assembly, they were created to help measure growth. These are computer adaptive tests, just like the SOLs, and they're based on the same content blueprints as the SOL test, but they're much shorter in length. And because they're not considered end of course assessments, um, they do not receive, students do not receive a passing or failing score on, um, after participating. Rather, they're designed to measure a student's proficiency over time in reading and math, um, in order to track their progress. So they receive what's called a vertical scaled score on their score report, as opposed to something that says pass or fail. So this is the first year that they were, these assessments were administered as intended with fall serving as a pre-test of sorts. So as a result, V D O E is continuing to develop implementation materials. In subsequent years, we're going to really be able to get our nerd on and do additional analyses to help us determine the significance of the changes. But this year we really can just start to understand what's happening. We can say that positive changes were shown in the vertical scaled scores from fall to winter. winter at all grade levels in both reading and math, but the growth was not uniform, and I'll explain more. All right, this next slide shows us for reading, this is the growth assessment scores for reading. It's important to know that the scale is the same scale across all grades of the assessment, and recall that there are no passing scores set. This slide looks at reading data. You can see the change over time across the grade levels. It's important to note at the top of the scale, so in grade eight, there are no above-grade level materials, so there's kind of a ceiling effect that can come in. And as I mentioned before, given this is all new, we don't have a true reference point yet for true growth comparisons. However, we do see the largest absolute changes in grades three, five, and six compared to the other grade levels. So you can see absolute changes there. This next slide shows the vertical scaled scores for math. Another important note is to not compare the scores for math and reading. The scale is independent across content areas, so you cannot directly equate a 13, 30 in reading to a 13, 30 in math. They're just done differently. Again, you can see the largest changes are in grades three, five, and six, so there's consistency in reading and math, and where we saw the biggest scale score point differences. In addition, it's important to note that in middle school, the content on the V G A only go through eighth grade content, so our students who are participating in high school content are not included in these assessments. And again, you have a ceiling effect, stronger in mathematics than you would see in reading even. And once we have this year's SOL data, and another year of the growth assessment data, we're gonna be, really be able to show progress over time, and do actual growth as compared to expected growth. As I said, we can really get our nerd on after this spring and next fall. So stay tuned. The true value of this data, though, is really at the individual student level, and schools have been provided with data that shows individual student strengths and areas of challenge through something that's called the Student Detail by Question Report. This shows by the type of question that a student received, did they get things right or wrong, even by the level of difficulty of the question. So schools are provided that for individuals, as well as in aggregate to look, okay, what are our areas of strength, or areas of challenge for us to focus on? That's really what these assessments are designed to do, to help instruction. And then schools use the reports, both at the individual student level and in aggregate, to inform targeted support and intervention for students who are experiencing challenges. So next, I'm gonna show some literacy data updates. First, please recall that we presented fall PALS data back in October, but at that time, we did not have kindergarten data, or our comparisons to the state, and now we do. So this table shows a comparison from fall '21 to fall '22 for both us and the state, with the change from fall '21 to, to fall '22 highlighted. You can see the positive change for M C P S in terms of the percent of students meeting or exceeding fall benchmarks. It's higher, it's higher at all three grade levels. And also, the far right column shows the gap between us and the state. We tend to lag behind the state in terms of the percent of students meeting or exceeding benchmarks in the fall. However, the gap in the fall of '22 is smaller, especially at grades kindergarten and one, than it was in fall of '21. Hold on for one second. Trying to get the frog gone. Oh, it helped. Okay. So, the next slide, it looks at some mid-year data. So recall that one of the aspirational targets identified for the strategic plan is 80% of our students meeting literacy benchmarks by the end of grade two. Why the end of grade two? It's when we're getting students ready for that ever-important grade three. Students participate in a mid-year version of PALS. However, there's no summed benchmark score, like there is in the fall and the spring. So we have to look at the data a little differently. So we looked at the, at two things for grade two students. First was the instructional oral reading level of grade two students in the fall and the, and the mid-year. In the fall, 35% of our second grade students were at or above the first grade level. By mid-year, 42% of the students were above, above the first year level and moving, moving up. So we set the benchmark a little higher to look where they are, so to show that they're moving from first grade to end of second grade benchmark. It was important to not just compare them to the starting point, but to look at the progression. Also, while there's no total benchmark at mid-year, there are some component scores. Spelling is a key area of focus in our literacy efforts, so in grade two, we saw an increase in the percent of students meeting the spelling benchmark from 51% in the fall to 66% in the spring. At the end of the year, we will analyze the change from fall to spring and provide comparisons to the state and to previous years, as we've done in the past. So the PALS, as we've talked about, which is the phonological analysis literacy screen, or I should say, for someone who wants to know what that is, this is developed by the University of Virginia. That's an early literacy measure. So, M C P S is committed to supporting literacy development throughout a child's educational experience. So we're now utilizing the Developmental Word Knowledge Inventory to assess students in grades three through eight. This inventory classifies word knowledge into four spelling stages. And the goal, of course, is to move students from phonetic, so which is the basic level, up to advanced. Those transitional and fluent levels, which are in the middle, are kind of steps along the journey, so you don't wanna live there, right? You wanna get everybody from the phonetic up to advanced. So the table shows the percent of student, I'm sorry, frog again. Percent of students at each grade level in the fall and at mid-year. Those cells that are highlighted in blue represent the areas with the greatest increases from fall to mid-year in terms of the percentages. You can see that in the earlier grades, the biggest change is moving students out of phonetic into transitional, but that at the other grade levels, the biggest increases are all, that you see are all the percent of students in the advanced stage. To counter that, we show the cells highlighted in red show those areas where the percent of students decreased the most. As we would want, those are all in the phonetic area. Can you see, I only highlighted when those numbers were close to double digits or double digits? So a focus on literacy is a key commitment of the strategic plan pillar of inclusive and collaborative learning environment. So the literacy data showed tonight, shared tonight, along with additional school-level data, are used to inform interventions and supports for students, both from the school level as well as division level. So first, schools are used, they're targeted support blocks that you've heard about before, to provide direct intervention to students identified as needing support in foundational literacy skills. As identified by the PALS, the Developmental Word Knowledge Inventory, and other sources, teachers are provided specific resources designed to support their interventions with students at each of the identified stages. In addition, through a cycle that works, collaborative learning teams at schools are focused this semester on analyzing assessment results to identify the appropriate instructional strategies for intervention and remediation. Speaking of a cycle that works, M C P S participated in both fall and spring virtual monitoring meetings with V D O E. V D O E specifically commended M C P S for a cycle that works, citing it as an example of best practice by highlighting how it connects to their identified essential school improvement drivers. They commended M C P S on the ongoing professional development and individualized support that's a critical part of supporting school leaders with the implementation of a cycle that works. So I wanted to get that in there. All right. So the remainder of this presentation is focusing on some potential changes that could be coming to the V D O E accreditation system. Some of them are very timely, based on some things we've already talked about tonight. Governor Yonkin is looking to reform the state's accountability system in two key ways. The first being to ensure high expectations for all students, and the second, to focus on transparency for educators and families. So the governor and staff at V D O E are proposing a phased approach to reforming the state's accreditation system to accomplish the governor's goals. The first phase would be implemented in fall of '24, based on 23, 24 data. And this phase involves changes that can be made directly by the Virginia Board of Education without requiring the regulatory or legislative changes. And the second phase would be implemented a year later, and this phase would involve regulatory changes, which necessitate a longer process, as well as public comment and all sorts of things. I'll share some information about the proposed Phase One changes. Note that I've deliberately highlighted the changes I'm discussing here as being proposed, and therefore subject to change. The Virginia Board of Education is scheduled to vote on these proposals in April, and they first received, received this information last week in their March meeting. And so they could be making changes, suggestions, and then they will be voting on the concept at their meeting in April. So I'm gonna walk through the various indicators and the types of proposed changes, and again, note that there are no specific targets yet. That'll be in the development, hence why it wouldn't take effect until a year from this fall. So for English and math achievement indicators, that's the overall performance of students in English and mathematics. And recall that English includes reading and writing combined. They're considering adjusting the benchmarks for what's considered acceptable improvement from one year to the next. For schools to get credit for making improvement, if they didn't hit the major threshold, they can get credit for what they call improvement. They're considering adjusting what that means. In addition, they're proposing including actual pass rates as a separate indicator that are different from the combined rates that are part of accreditation. What does that mean? Accreditation takes a pass rate, and then adds those students who showed growth, and those English learners who showed progress in English. And so it, they're just two different ways of looking at things. So they're saying, all right, let's put it all in the accreditation system as a separate indicator. For the achievement gap indicators, they're proposing adding a new student group, one they're calling lowest performing students. Don't ask me what they're defining that as, but that's, they haven't defined exactly how they're gonna determine what thresholds would be used, and it looks like it could be different across schools, just the lowest certain percentage of your students. And for science, just for, as in English and math, they're proposing redefining what's required for a school to get credit for improvement from the previous year. So perhaps the most significant proposed change is the suspension of the use of the chronic absenteeism indicator in accreditation. They're suggesting that absenteeism rates still get published, but not to be used to determine a school's accreditation status. More on this one in a minute. That's a teaser. Okay. So, there, the last slide on the proposed Phase One changes are specific to those things that are only for the high schools at graduation-related indicators. They're not proposing any changes to the College Career and Civic Readiness Indicator, which is good, because it's being included for the first time this year, and it would seem strange to change it, right, when they're starting. For the Graduation and Completion Index, they're proposing adjusting that improvement benchmark again, right? Looking at how they define what could mean improvement. And then finally, for the dropout rate indicator, they're proposing suspending the use of that as a separate indicator, since it already is incorporated in the Graduation and Completion Index. Meaning, if a student drops out, they count as zero points in that index as accreditation. But they would still report the dropout rates. All right. So again, all the proposed changes I just discussed would not be in place until the 24, 25 ratings, which are based on the 23, 24 school year data, not the current school year. However, they are considering two additional proposals that could take effect this year, if approved, right? If approved, these are all proposals. The first is the sus, that didn't help that time. First is the suspension of the Chronic Absenteeism Indicator as an accreditation metric. This is what was done for the ratings this year, based on last year's data. As you heard earlier, chronic absenteeism is a very real challenge, impacting many, many schools throughout Virginia and the nation. But including an accreditation may serve to be unduly punitive. This is the logic from, that the state has shared. Of all the work to combat absenteeism should impact the accredit, academic indicators and the graduation in accreditation, is, appears to be the logic. Again, they're saying they would publish these rates on their school quality profiles, so there would be transparency about where a school is with that. Again, I don't know that this will be adopted, but that's being considered right now. And the second is a proposal related to how they calculate acceptable growth for the accreditation ratings. It's, this proposal is necessary to do some, due to some ambiguity in the legislative language around the growth assessments. So they're basically saying that for students in grades four through eight, their growth is comparing last spring to this spring, okay? And for students in grade three, who didn't have a test last spring, growth would be fall to spring. So that's it. And that one, I'm, is gonna be pretty non-controversial, I would imagine. So once the Virginia Board of Education makes any decisions, or we receive any further updates after their April meetings about the proposed changes, we will update you and our school leaders. Thank you for the opportunity to update you tonight, and sorry I sound like Kermit.
Thank you, Dr. Casada, and for preparing us for this proposed legislation, or proposed changes. Any questions or comments? Vice Chair Stevens.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Casada. I'm not gonna make you answer a lot, because you're very froggy.
It's okay, I have the lozenge, and we're trying.
So with the V G A, the Virginia Growth Assessment, the V D O E has not determined what adequate growth looks like right now?
So, so tell me what you mean by adequate growth, like from fall to, fall to winter?
Right.
Okay, so because it's the first year using the assessments the way that they were designed, so this year, students in the fall took, in third grade, took an assessment that's third grade content. If you recall, last year, the fall assessments were based on previous year's content, because we were coming out of the virtual year and all of that. So they don't have enough data to have measured, really, what the numbers will look like in terms of acceptable or defined ranges. So this year, when they're looking at data, they're dividing performance really into, like, quartile bands. So that's one way to look at it. Another way to look at it is like we did, and as Prince William just did, when they shared their data, was, what's the vertical scale score now compared to earlier? When I look at ours compared to Prince William, numbers are different, but the, the patterns kind of are the same. You see larger gains in third grade, fifth grade, theirs were third, fourth, and fifth, ours were third, fifth, and sixth. You see much smaller gains in seventh and eighth grade. A lot of that is, I think, ceiling effect. We can't fully know that until we have all the state's data, and they can set kind of acceptable levels. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Without getting too nerdy? Okay.
Yeah, it does, it does. And so, because as I recall, the way the V G A was designed was so that you could measure growth from beginning to middle to end. And so we don't know how this is going to compare to the actual SOL. We're still in that gray area?
So we know, again, since this year is different than last year with how these worked, right? We will know a lot more after this spring of, of how it, of how it looks, right? And so, there's, yeah, we'll know a lot more after this spring. We can't do predictions quite yet.
Do we have data yet that compares our score growth across the state, or just in our neighboring school division?
So, we, we know what Prince William put out there, right? And we have the quartile bands that I talked about, but that would've been a much longer discussion to have tonight. So really, what we've done is look at how our students' performance breaks. We divide our own students up into quartiles or percentiles, and we can compare that to the state, can provide that information, but, and looking at that overall, the concern is, there's wide ranges, particularly for mid-year, as to when places are giving those assessments, and we were on a very early end of that. We may make some adjustments to that for next year to be able to do better comparisons. We started so, our school year so early. Next year, we'll start a tiny bit later, so, looking at that, and the state just really got through looking at their winter data, because some divisions went really long. So we gave our assessments in December, and it took them until late March, till mid-March to be able to even share information from the winter ones. As I said, the most beneficial use of this information is where students are in terms of what they know and what they haven't mastered yet, for schools to be able to be like, okay, here's what we've taught, here's what they're getting, here's what they're not getting, and then to be able to target it based on that feedback that you've not gotten in the middle of the year, the same way, until now.
Okay, great. On Slide nine, where you've got the table for Developmental Word Knowledge Inventory, and it's percent of students in each spelling range, can you, at each spelling stage, can you explain why measure of spelling is key to understanding reading growth? Because that's how I'm assuming.
So I can do a tiny bit, and then perhaps, so I had conversations with Heather James, our, you know, our elementary literacy coordinator around this. And so, it's one of those foundational literacy skills, right? So just like PALS is identifying those foundational skills, it's been identified as one of those things that is a key predictor, right, of reading success. And so, it's been a focus here, because their research has shown a direct connection between this information, as well as a prediction in terms of reading performance. But this is new for us. Again, we'll get our nerd on with how this actually correlates with SOL performance once we have it this year.
And then, I think this is my last question, I hope. The PALS scores. So we do PALS in fall, and then we do it again in the spring. We don't do it at the very end of the year, correct? We just have those two measures?
So we do a fall, and a mid-year, and a spring. So the spring is close to the end of the year, yes.
Okay, so the mid-year is the one we can't look at exactly like the fall. The final one, can we look at it like we do the fall, so we can measure beginning to end growth?
And we can, and we can do that more than we used to be able to do, because it used to be at upper, at first and second grade, a little different than it is now. Now, with every student doing it at both points in time, we have a lot more information, so we can look at that, and we will, and we'll share that once the school year ends.
But right now, those, those, that jump in growth, it, it looks really good, because we're narrowing that gap between us and the rest of the state.
So we look, and the state, so we look better this fall than we did last fall compared to the state. And so for kindergarten, really, that tells you, here's who's coming in to us, right? So when I, when you look to first and second grade, that's really where you can see, perhaps, we are closing a gap. And then at the spring, we're really gonna be able to see what's happening.
And then you'll share those scores with us when they're ready?
Of course.
Okay, great. So actually, that was all my questions. I appreciate the, the depth and breadth of this, and look forward to hearing what the V D O E is going to do.
Me too.
Thank you, Mrs. Steve, Vice Chair Stevens. Mrs. Williams, did you have questions or comment? Mrs. Williams, did you have questions or comment?
I have a question on Slide Nine. Can you pull Slide Nine? It's probably just an explanation, but if I'm a little confused, I suspect anybody who's watching might be confused as well. At least I hope. It's not just me. My question is, you know, I understand innovative spelling stages. I understand that. So explain to me, percent of students in each spelling stage follow 2022 and mid-year 2022-23. Let's just take this as an example. Third grade, at the phonetic level, the 61% are in that specific cell. Fast forward to 22-23, and 40% are in that cell. Why is it considered a negative?
It's not a negative, it's not a negative at all. It's actually a positive. I just was highlighting the red to show where we were seeing the decreases, and they were saying, that was what we want to see as a result of the upward movement. So it's not a negative.
Okay, so it's a positive decrease?
Yes, it's just to contrast it with the blue, just to be a different color. So, you decrease the percent of students in phonetic, which is what you wanted. You see that you moved a lot of them up to transitional.
Okay, I just misunderstood what you're saying. Now that I read it correctly, the color just confused me. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mrs. Breja.
I also have a little bit of a Kermit the Frog thing happening, so.
I feel you.
We can rib it together here. So I think a question of mine has already been answered. I just want to summarize it to make sure I understand it. We do not know how these relate to the SOLs, because we have not taken the SOLs yet.
We know that they're the same, we know, I can tell you right now that there's going to be a strong correlation, because they're the same content, the same blueprints. But in terms of thresholds of what score should get you to where, that's where it's a little tricky to do so far. And what's acceptable growth from fall to winter at each grade level, we don't know that yet.
Gotcha. And I understand, this is somewhat a separate topic, and maybe you're not equipped to answer it at this point, but I understand we have a grade audit underway. Is part of that audit going to be lining up what our student grades are versus what their SOL scores are, to see if those match?
That, um...
You might not be able to answer that. That's kind of a left...
That's something that can certainly be considered.
Okay. So I wanted to talk about, you highlighted for us grades three, five, and six, which had very good growth. I want to talk about grades four, seven, and eight.
Yeah.
What's going on with grades four, seven, and eight?
Okay, well, again, I don't know, let's talk about grade four separately from seven and eight. So grade four versus grade three and five, I don't know, because of how the scale works, if the, even though it's a numeric scale, right, if 20 points at this point means the same thing as 30 points. So I don't, I don't know enough there. Those differences aren't as significant. Seventh and eighth grade, eighth grade, I can tell you, is quite likely due to somewhat of a ceiling effect, right? So you can't, there's less room to move. So to move the average is harder, and particularly in mathematics, when all of your advanced students are not taking that assessment, because they're in algebra or geometry. So already, your higher, your higher-performing students are not part of it, so your average is going to look a little different. I will say, like in, again, what I've seen in our neighbors, in Prince William, their grade seven number is the smallest, but that's because, that's where they skip, everybody skips different levels of math, too, along the way, of advanced math. So the math one's particularly tricky. So, I'm interested to learn more about the middle school piece. I just don't know. I do know that at the extremes of the scale, at the top in particular, it's going to be harder to show significant numbers, you know, the point, the numbers are going to just be different. And I don't know enough yet to tell you why.
Yeah. I mean, I noticed, you know, I think it was for math, we had a one-point improvement for eighth grade, and it's just like, well, it's improvement, but I would...
And that could just be, and I can look further into it, but it could be that you still have a big chunk. That's the mathematical average, right, which can be very skewed by outliers. That tells me we still have quite a few students who are really struggling. We probably have a good bit more that are higher than that, but because the distribution is skewed, the average is pulled down. I'd be curious to see how that compares to the median or other measures, and I can, again, nerd out and look at that for you.
Okay. I would be curious.
Sure.
So, the, going back to everyone's favorite, Slide Nine, I noticed that our third and fourth graders have the lowest overall scores versus everybody else. They started in the lowest place. They have had some improvement, which is good. When you read a lot about the news and analysis, you know, third and fourth graders are really struggling, because they missed, you know, some very crucial in-person instructional years. Do we have a specific plan for our third and fourth graders to try to remediate them specifically?
Well, so I'm going to answer the first part of your question first, and then I would not be equipped to answer about the specific plan for third and fourth graders. However, this is a developmental inventory, so it's scaled. So you would expect the higher proportions of students in grades three and four to be at the lower stages, because it's the same stages across the board, right? So they, moving them up. And so you want to see that movement. I would, Dr. Goldsung can answer about specific plans for intervening with third and fourth graders.
So when we assessed the students using the Developmental Word Knowledge Inventory, part of the scoring, then we had the kids put into the, are you a phonetic speller? Are you transitional? Are you fluent? Or are you advanced? So when we had, this is how we identified students for targeted support block. And so when we identified a student as a phonetic speller or transitional speller, their intervention, their instruction, was based on a specific lesson plan, approach, template, and materials that was designed to close the gaps around phonetics. If you were a phonetic speller, then you had targeted support for students who were in the phonetic speller range. And then those intervention materials and activities and instruction were designed to move you forward, so that you would, and so that, with the goal being exactly what you saw on our data table, which was to move you from phonetic to transitional, or from transitional to fluent. And so, those plans were used, and are being used, at all levels, but specifically our reading support teachers. And then our classroom teachers are using those materials, which are myriad, but very, very specific to the needs of the kids that are within those bands of skills. And then it targets specific things like vowel patterns. Those are the, it is the specific use of, we'll use, just for example, the OU vowel pattern. Once you can master that sound, then you are able to decode and access higher-level text. So, very specific plans.
That leads me into my next question about the targeted support block. I don't, I don't know who wants to answer it. So are these, the targeted support blocks, are these something that we have decided to do, or is the state requiring that we do targeted support?
This is our, our response to the state. We're doing it because it's what's right for our kids, but the state is asking us as part of our early intervention and literacy response, that we have 30 minutes of protected time to intervene with students who are performing below grade level.
Okay, so the state is not, you know, the system that we have in our early elementary, where the kids are, you know, going to different teachers and stuff like that? That is a system that is MCPS-designed? That's not...
The system is designed, but the time is required.
Okay.
The system is designed by us, but the time is required by the state.
Gotcha. Well, I think that's all for me. Thank you.
Mrs. Spall has one question.
One question. What is the score range for the Virginia Growth Assessment for math and reading?
It goes up to like, shoot, you know what? I should have had the full range. But it's like 1,200 to 1,800, somewhere in there. I can get you that one, I get you the additional information that's been asked for, so, yeah.
That's good.
The range are the same for both, but you can't directly compare one to the other.
Understood. Understood. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Casada and Dr. Goldsung, for chiming in when we need you to. We appreciate the information, and I love these updates on our strategic plans. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up on our action, is our action agenda, Finance and Operations. Mr. Andy Hawkins, Executive Director and Finance and Operations, will provide the approved December 22 Capital Improvement Plan and the FY 24-28 Five-Year Forecast. The five-year forecast amounts and assumptions have been updated, based on the proposed operating budget for FY 24 to 28. Mr. Hawkins will also provide the summary of the FY 24 School Board Budget.
So, good evening. As we stand here tonight, the General Assembly still has not adopted an amended version of the budget. We're still operating every, all the numbers that we're going to show tonight are based off of the governor's introduced budget. So when we start off, when we started in the budget process, we received a budget in a department request would have increased our operating fund budget to over $135 million. Since that time, through the different levels of reductions, we've reduced almost $9 million down to $126,794,202. We balanced the budget based on leveraging the American Rescue Plan Act and Title I funding. The American Rescue Act funds, we are going to have to amend the budget for that, and to continue one more year for certain positions, and we'll show you those in the next few slides. The Title I funding was leveraged for four reading support teachers, and they will be for one more year as well. These positions will be our priority for the FY 25 budget. We have also reallocated $1.8 million from the Central Office budget to provide additional funding directly for school instructional needs. There was zero growth in central office positions in this budget. And we, finally, we repurposed all of our, we repurposed some of our current vacant positions in order to provide enhanced instructional support for our division. We'll continue following the strategic plan as far as Pillar One is concerned. We've added the teachers or the positions shown on your screen, where we have first grade teachers and special ed coach at Dean, four and a half physical education teachers at our elementary schools, Metz, middle school reading support and instructional facilitator, all the way down. The positions that you can see on bold were moved from the grant fund, which is, those are the American Rescue Plan Act funding, to the operating fund. The ones that will still be in the American Rescue Plan funding for one additional year are on this slide in front of you, where we will have instructional facilitators at each elementary school, and Boulton Intermediate, and one reading specialist at Boulton Intermediate. And you can see that our primary focus is on, and these slides are in reading, and also these instructional facilitators help keep the instructional program to be administered with fidelity. Title I funding, we have reading support teachers in that, in that fund. Pillar Two, we're looking at extending the contract for our clinical nurse contractor, coordinator, from 10 to 11 months, providing increased funding for some of our school psychology interns, that we're not able to hire right now, because other school divisions offer more funding for these internships. So we are matching the market with that, and providing some more funding for school nursing programs and student health. In the American Rescue Plan Act funding, we're still retaining certified nurse assistants or CNAs at selected schools. Pillar number three, you know, all of our staff are going to receive a salary increase right now in the governor's budget that's at 5%. We are hopeful that in the next compromise budget that comes back, when the General Assembly adopts it, that it will be increased to 7%. We also have a 1% retention bonus for all staff, and in the hiring of an additional technology support specialist. These technology support specialists at our schools are the primary persons who help our students with their devices, and our staff with their devices, to make sure that it's functioning properly every day. Uh-oh. Oh, number four, strategic plan, strong family and community partnerships. What am I doing this wrong? We are increased funding for the English as a Second Language line. School Division supports or has 38 different languages that this language line serves. Extending the contract from our work-based learning specialist from 11 to 12 months, and we're providing additional operational funding for the performing arts. And of course, we need to continue to provide additional funding for PSAT, SAT, and CTE testing. Some of our unfunded needs, we need to have a long-term strategy, a compensation strategy for our staff, so that we can stay in the marketplace for, especially in our classrooms. And we need to figure out a way to keep our American Rescue Plan grant-funded positions, those will be a top priority. That total is approximately $2 million going into FY 25, that we need to be, keep those positions in mind, to be a priority for the FY 25 budget. And of course, our reoccurring unfunded need is reducing our bus tier system from five tiers to four. The budget is allocated as shown on the screen. We got about 88% of all of our funding is allocated to salary and benefits. We are a staff-intensive business, and this is not atypical from other school divisions surrounding us. And you can see the breakdown between all of the other categories. Our total operating fund budget is $126,794,202 for the upcoming '24 budget year. This sheet documents where all of the funding is allocated. Almost 80% of all of our funds are budgeted directly at the schools, not to say that all the other departments here don't support the schools directly, but you can see the breakdown of the funding and how it's budgeted. So, this is the night where we, with school board, will either, we hope that school board will adopt a budget. We will have a meeting tomorrow night with city council to present our budget. These meetings are required by law. We know that once we get through these, once the General Assembly comes back with an adopted budget, we will have to have another series of meetings to reconcile our budget to whatever the General Assembly comes back with. And we will have those meetings as soon as the General Assembly adjourns. Last year, I think it was not until June the 12th before we knew what the General Assembly budget is. So this could be, could linger on for some time. I heard a report this morning that the conferees were meeting, and that it would be at least several more weeks before they got back to, before they got back together to have some more meetings. So, I don't think the resolution to this budget impasse is going to be as soon as we would all like. Are there any questions, concerns about the budget? Alba, can you pull up the budget summary? Maybe, maybe we should go there. I'll show you how the breakdown of all of the line items are in the budget summary. We have a breakdown of all of the different funds within our, within our budget. We have the operating fund, the federal grant fund, food service fund, and the capital improvement fund as well. So our entire budget, based on all of those funds together, is $138,994,572. The CIP has been adopted by the school board on December the 13th, and is primarily dealing with roof replacement at Osborne, fire alarm system at Metz, and some window replacements at Hayton Round, and a parking lot replacement at Round as well. In future years on the CIP, you'll see that our next big project, of course, will be the Dean School Project, which will be approximately $60, $62 million. With the five-year forecast, the school division seems to be in very good shape. These all attachments are attached to your, in the, in the... These all attachments are attached to your, in the, to the agenda. School division seems to be in good financial shape for the foreseeable future, and we will continue to work with our partners with the city to make sure that our finances stay healthy and so that we can provide the best possible instruction to our students. Are there any questions or concerns?
Yes, Ms. Chair, I have a question or conversation. All right, so we have proposed a balanced budget with the General Assembly already stating that they are agreeing to a 5% raise for, for staff, for teachers. They're now proposing-
All of our budget is based on the Governor's introduced budget. The General Assembly has not spoken yet. They have not come to an agreement yet. Now, the House and the Senate versions of their, of their budgets both agree that 7%, but they differ from the Governor's introduced budget. So we hope that, and nothing happens until the, until the General Assembly passes a budget and the Governor signs it into law. So we're hopeful that during this reconciliation process with two branches of the government agreeing on 7%, that that's what will be going forward.
So with this city going through this exact process we're going through right now, and the General Assembly comes back in, I mean, what, how late did they come back last year? I don't remember. Was it June, right?
It was June, yes.
They come back in June and say, we're, we need to then provide a 7% raise. Where does that put us at that point in time in June? We're, we need to have hard choices? Are we taking money from-
Well, you know, it's difficult because it puts us in a bind when they come back that late because we need to be securing teachers for the next year. We need to be writing, issuing contracts out, and that really puts us in a, in a difficult situation with, with our staff. Sooner the better, is all I can say. We need to have that information as soon as possible because the, the last day that a teacher can resign, I think is June 15th, but we need to be recruiting and hiring teachers now for next school year without that. Go ahead, Chair.
Dr. Newman.
So, which brings me to my question for the board. Can we get the board's blessing to release contracts on May 16th using the 5%? And if we hear something different in June, we would reissue contracts with the 7%? But as Mr. Hawkins stated, June 15th, our teachers can, can go if they want. We would like to give them contracts before they walk out the door, May 31st or 30th, whatever that day is. And if we gave them out on the 16th, you give them two weeks, which is normal, to bring, to send them back. We would be able to plan accordingly on what we need to do as far as staffing is concerned.
Yeah, I'm good with that. Do we want to, you have a question, Mrs. Spall?
How does that 5% compare with what we're hearing our neighboring jurisdictions are
So Prince William County today has on their website that they will be up at 5%. They will incorporate a step, which is 3% and a cost of living bonus of 2%. So they're, they're at 5%. Most of our surrounding jurisdictions are following the guidelines or the recommendations from the Governor's budget and being at 5%.
Ms. Spall, if I can add to that, I think that's a good question, but I think we need to be asking a different question. If Prince William is giving five, at some point, Manassas City is going to have to get back in the race with them, so at some point, they're going to have to give five and we're going to have to give six or seven and chip away at the lead that they're in right now.
Because last year, they gave more than we gave.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Other comments and questions? Ms. Bresia?
I just had a question on the line item for the new Dean School, that it has a $62 million price tag when we saw an estimate that came in that was higher than that.
So we developed a financial plan. These, this amount for the Dean School was based on a report by Downey and Scott that was given to us a couple of years ago prior to the pandemic. When we got those numbers, we worked with city council to adopt a financial plan to fully fund this school by that, by that time period. So that's how we got to the $62 million amount. And now we're, we, I think at the last meeting, we received an update. Due to supply chain issues and significant inflation, this same school would cost 60, would cost in excess of $62 million. So that was the reason why. A task force between city council and the school board was formed to determine what our alternatives are. It was reported tonight that the school board is going to issue out an RFP for design for the new Dean School, and there will be adjustments made to be able to stay within the $62 million that's here, that's been agreed to under the financial plan by the school board and city council.
Mrs. Brooks?
I just had one thing to add to, backtrack to the salaries. You spoke about the fact that, you know, they're saying 5%, you know, they gave more last year than we did, but they did already give more, their salaries were already more before, so it's, it's a nice little jump of a catch-up that we need to do to be, you know, paying our teachers what they're making in the county. Just wanted to make that noted.
Yep, and when, in these times when education is increasingly critical and becoming more challenging for our staff, we, more is better if we can get it funded, and I wish it could be even more than that. Vice Chair Stevens?
I just wanted to share, we've had this, this has been an ongoing discussion on the budget, and we've had quite a few robust conversations where many of our questions have been answered, so I really appreciate that, Mr. Hawkins. And, and to the conversation on salaries, our goal at the end is to try to get as close to Prince William County and to get as close to our surrounding divisions, but we can't do that alone. We need the help of another body to get us there. So it requires a team effort, and it requires a recognition that all of our school staff are vital members of our school division and they're vital members of our community, and they're instrumental in creating tomorrow's leaders who are going to run the community. So we have to work together to make sure that we're compensating all of our staff appropriately and fairly and that we're doing it at market value.
Mrs. Spall?
Mr. Hawkins, there is a per pupil figure that we've discussed in the past. I'm not sure that people watching at home are aware of that, but there's a delta that's been growing since about the year 2006 that accounts for inflation that we're not keeping up with. Can you share that per pupil cost for the year 2006 and what it is today?
I can't remember the exact numbers, but I'll just put it to you this way. If you assume that in 2006, the school division was being funded appropriately, let's just use that as your base year. Both the city and the state have not kept up with the rate of inflation since that time. So if they had just kept up with the rate of inflation on a per-student basis between now, between then and now, over the last 15 years, 14, 15 years, the school division's funding would be more than $45 million more than it is right now. Mrs. Stevens is correct. We're going to need cooperation from our partners, both at the state and the city level. The governor today is sitting on $3.6 billion surplus, which could be used to help finance and fully support and fund public education. Everyone agrees. There's no one that agree, that disagrees with the fact that public education has been chronically underfunded over the, over the last 25 years. But now that we have the money, now is the time to be able to fix those wrongs that have been done to the school divisions. We took our cuts as public education when we had a recession and when the state was in bad, in bad shape, but those cuts were never reinstated by the state. And all we would like to do now is have those cuts restored. The $811 million that was documented by the Virginia Department of Education's Board of, Governing Board is, would be a great help to us and would help Manassas City, would help all of our school divisions across the state to retain and hire high-quality staff.
Commissar, questions from the board?
Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the FY 2024, 2028 five-year forecast in the FY 2023, 2024 budget as presented in the amount of $138,994,572 and authorize the school board chairman to transmit the 2024 CIP, 2024, 2028 five-year forecast and these estimates to the city council of Manassas in accordance with the school board policy and Virginia State Code.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, second by Mrs. Brooks, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the FY 2024, 2028 five-year forecast in the FY 2023, 2024 budget as presented in the amount of $138,994,572 and authorize the school board chairman to transmit the 2024 CIP, 2024 to 2028 five-year forecast and these estimates to the city council of Manassas in accordance with the school board policy and Virginia State Code. Is there any discussion? Yes. Is this going to be enough for our staff? Do we need to ask for more? I think we need to ask for more. And I know that, you know, the city manager gave us a guideline of 3%, but that's just not going to cut it for our staff. More discussion?
For the 2020, we have to think about the 2023 school year, and then we have to think about 2024, 2025, when the rest of our ARPA funds are gone and all of those other positions. We, we think about the ARPA positions. Mr. Hawkins, correct me if I'm wrong. We have, there were 68 ARPA positions? I may have the number slightly off.
We had 63.
63, okay, it was off by five. But here's the thing, all 63 of those positions were vital and are vital and continue to be vital. They'll be vital next year, they'll be vital the year after. When we look at our student performance growth, that's in part because of those ARPA-funded positions. We can't just get rid of those positions when the funds run out. They're necessary to the success of our students, and it's going to take some stepping up and funding to keep those positions, to keep that forward momentum in student progress and student performance. And we have to put the money where it needs to be, and that's in the future of our children who are the adults tomorrow.
As a school board, we have a responsibility to, to ask for what we need, and that includes employee compensation and benefits.
For all employees.
Yes, not SOQ funding or any of that.
You did say employees, but I want to make it clear that it's all employees. It's not just SOQ-funded employees, and it's not just teachers. Every staff person employed by Manassas City Public Schools is vital, and they're worth
So we have a motion. Go ahead.
I just wanted to add, I mean, if we want our community to grow and we want our students and our families to grow and thrive in this community, we have to fund the schools. The schools are where they learn to be citizens. You know, the families are part of that, but it's, it's the schools that really are the heart of, you know, our community. So we need more, we need more funding. That's the end of it. We can't, we can't keep going on with our skeleton.
Point of order, Chair. If we do not pass a budget tonight, then what, would we still present something tomorrow
Mrs. Williams will be presenting for us tomorrow night. I mean, if, if we're presenting.
So I think we, we do need to adopt a budget, recognizing that we're going to have to have additional meetings. This is sort of like the first draft. The second one, we will come back whenever the General Assembly comes back, but we're required by law to have a budget by April the 1st, and then we have to give a presentation to city council after that. Once the General Assembly comes back with a compromise or some agreement, we will have 30 days from that time to produce another budget and be submitted to city council at that time. So things will have to move quickly after the General Assembly comes back. We're going to have, probably have to have some special meetings to come back and, and get our budget reconciled.
Thank you, Andy.
So when we present, assuming this is voted on and we're presenting tomorrow night, do we need to make our ask then with a difference?
Yes.
Okay. And do we need to have a different amount?
Well, my, yeah.
I'm looking at Robin.
Well, my, my concern is we're, we're basing, we have basis budget on the, the Governor's budget. However, if the General Assembly does come back and say 7%, that puts us in a bind.
Yeah, we have to come back with a bigger budget to account for that additional 2% for our non-SOQ-funded positions. So we do have to come back to the table.
Mrs. Brooks?
Okay, so yes, this is with the, what the Governor is doing with the 5%, but it's also based on the assumption that we get 3% from the city. It's the city that could also increase how much they give us.
That's correct.
They, the city needs to give us more than 3% this year and moving forward, in conjunction with the Governor giving us more as the General Assembly wants.
Mrs. Spall?
Dare I say, much like the cost of building new Dean, we had to leave, and we were, I mean, it looks like we're going to be able to meet the amount that we've left in our budget, the amount that we've, you know, through the work of the task force, I believe that, that number is actually a manageable number. My question is, we have to present a balanced budget, so, you know, how do we get out of the cycle? And I think it has to be that we do ask first city council and then also worry about the rest of the budget once General Assembly decides to do their job. I don't mean to be facetious, but that is kind of a situation. We need, we need more money from the city, but we also need more money from the state.
Right.
And that is, you know, because we have already been austere for 18 years.
Mm-hmm.
Wait a minute. 2006, yes, 18, 17. I don't know how you do that, though. Do we write a letter? Do we have a task force?
No. We don't need another committee.
We don't need a task force.
We're a school board, we need to make that decision right now.
So it is, so that's what we talked about last budget. You know, it is our job to say what, what we need. That is our job.
Right. And it's our job to pass a balanced budget and to pass it within the timeframe, and the timeframe, the deadline is April 1st. So we vote on a budget, the budget passes, the Governor comes back, 7%, the, the city council comes back, yes, a higher percent than 3%, then we come back and, Mr. Hawkins, correct me if I'm wrong, we rework the budget.
30 days.
Within 30 days.
Yes, ma'am, that's exactly correct.
Okay, all right.
So, yeah, so a vote tonight does not say this is the number we have, that this number is- So, yeah, so a vote tonight does not say this is the number we ha- that, this number is, for lack of a better term, set in stone forever. This number can move based on other things that are occurring or other things that may occur.
Whatever you pass tonight, so if you adopt this tonight, just note that we're going to have to come back and fix it later on, no matter what happens.
Correct.
All right, so let me repeat this motion. Vice Chair Stevens, um, moved, second by Mrs. Brooks, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the FY twenty-four, twenty-eight five-year forecast in the FY twenty-three, twenty-four budget as presented in the amount of one hundred thirty-eight million nine hundred ninety-four thousand, five hundred seventy-two dollars and authorize the School Board Chair to transmit the twenty twenty-four CIP, twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-eight five-year forecast and these estimates to the City Council of Manassas in accordance with the School Board Policy and the Virginia State Code. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion carries seven zero. Next up on our agenda tonight is personnel. Our twenty-three, twenty-four proposed health insurance premiums. Ms. Billy, Billy K. Wingfield and Megan Mills have hung with us throughout this meeting.
Don't be shy.
Good evening, Megan Mills, Division's Benefit Administrator is going to present the health insurance premiums for active employees and retirees for school year twenty-three, twenty-four.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, so I'm going to go over the proposed health insurance rates. So this is a really large spreadsheet, but at the very top, it shows you the rates from this plan year. In the middle, it shows you the rates for the comprehensive plans that are proposed for next year. And below that are preventative plans. And then on your far left, you're going to see that there are participant numbers and those are membership numbers from January twenty twenty-three. Those numbers fluctuate all the time, but those are the numbers that we had in January of twenty twenty-three. This next slide shows you the current premium and then what our renewal amounts are and then what the difference is. And you'll see that the current year for this one is the twenty-two, twenty-three year and the renewal is for the twenty-three, twenty-four plan year. And we had a four-point-seven percent increase for our Anthem plans and we had a zero percent increase for our Kaiser plans. And when you look back at the last five years for the Anthem plans, in twenty nineteen, it was a zero percent increase, twenty twenty, zero percent increase, twenty twenty-one, three percent increase, twenty twenty-two, zero, and twenty twenty-three, zero. So it's actually really, really good. The Kaiser in twenty nineteen had eight percent, twenty twenty, eight percent, twenty-one, zero percent, twenty-two, eight point two. In twenty twenty-three, eight point two as well with having a zero percent for twenty twenty-four. We also offer standalone plans and we have a standalone dental plan with Delta Dental. It saw a three percent increase this year. It's, um, a split, a sixty-forty split, so sixty percent in the employer pays, forty percent the employee pays. And you'll see our current rates and then the renewal rates with the differences. And then we also offer a standalone vision plan and that is a hundred percent employee paid and there were no rate changes and we are locked into those rates for the next two years. We also offer our retirees insurance. And, um, you're going to see at the top, it's our non-Medicare plan, so it's the same plan that we offer to our active employees. Um, you'll see the current rate with the renewal rates. They're going to be the same amount that you see for our active employees. We have twenty-nine folks that are in these plans. We have two linked dependents as well and those are the numbers again from January. And, um, previously, several years ago, the School Board decided to provide a subsidy to some of the retirees. And as of April first, we will only have two more. And by January of twenty twenty-five, we will no longer have that in place. Then we have our Medicare eligible plan and that's our called Advantage Sixty-five Plan. And we have a hundred and fifty-one retirees who are participating in it. And, um, that saw a five-dollar increase, the same thing as last year, last year saw five dollars too. And then they have the, also, um, the Delta Dental and the VSP plan, the same plans that we offer our active employees. We have twenty-one participants in the Delta and twenty-four in the VSP. So there are some service, um, changes to the Anthem plans this year. Kaiser did not have any chance, plan, any changes to their services. Um, one of them is the High Deductible Health Plan and it is in accordance with the new IRS regulations. So that they have a now, they have now made it three thousand for single and network and six thousand for family and network. They've expanded their virtual options care. Um, they have a Sydney app where you can actually now chat with a doctor on, on your phone. You can do a virtual meeting on your phone. You have access to psychology, psychiatrist, dermatologist. So they're adding a lot of virtual features to, um, the plans. They have now a diabetes prevention program. And they also have a in-home addiction treatment program. We don't have Optima Health and Kaiser did not have any plan changes. So the next few slides are a comparison of all of the plans. We offer the Key Advantage Two-Fifty, the Key Advantage One Thousand, the High Deductible Health Plan and the Kaiser Plan. So you'll see a plan or two on here that we don't offer and it's only because we can offer seven. And so we've picked those seven out. So you'll see those are the comparisons. And then this is the Kaiser summary. It's kind of blurry. And then we have our Advantage Sixty-five Plan for our Medicare eligible retirees. And then this last slide is from the WABE Guide and it looks at districts around in Virginia. Um, that what this is showing is the percentage that the employer pays towards these different programs. And the last time I presented, um, it was noted that the, the little star asterisk was, didn't have the correct note at the bottom. So I've added in there, um, what was submitted and it just is for the short-term disability plan. If you're a non-V, if you don't have VRS, if you're in Plan One or Plan Two or a first-year hybrid member, that you, um, have a zero percent employer contribution and a hundred percent employee contribution. And then hybrid members after their first year, it moves programs and it becomes a hundred percent employer contributes, paid and zero percent for the employee contribution. And that was my last slide.
Thank you, Mrs. Mills. Um, when I'm out and about talking to people that work for Manassas City Schools, they're always, um, very happy with the policies and health insurance and benefits that we provide to them. And I want to thank you and, um, Ms. Wingfield for, um, all the research that you do in presenting this information. Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I appreciate you fixing the note.
Ms. Bresia?
I also appreciate you fixing the note, thank you very much.
No problem.
I also, I just wanted to ask in general, so the, you know, the salary, uh, discussion regarding how much we pay our staff, that receives the most headline, but benefits become a more important part of the calculation, especially as you move through your career. You know, you care about it a lot more at forty-five than you care about it when you're twenty-five, right? So I'm just wondering, um, and maybe you're not prepared to answer this today, but I would be curious to know more about the process by which we're checking with our neighboring jurisdictions, remaining competitive, all that good stuff.
So USI, our, um, benefits consultant, they actually are going to be doing a benchmarking in June, which we're participating in. And we'll be telling them what surrounding areas we want to be compared to, so it will give us a really good look at, at where we stand.
All right, I will look forward to that then, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
I don't have any questions, just a comment because benefits are, are really important part of, of the whole package, the whole comprehensive package. And you, these benefit packages, whether they're here at the school or at my home, my husband's job, they seem so well put together, it, they're easy to follow, but I know the work behind it is, I know it's a lot of work behind it. So thank you for everything you have done, I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of, of Manassas approve the FY twenty-three, twenty-four insurance plan and premiums as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hollingsworth, second by Vice Chair Stevens, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the FY twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four insurance plans and premiums as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries seven zero. Moving on to board members' comments, and I'd like to start with our student representatives, Mr. Beebe. You only have tonight and two more meetings with us, so.
Good evening, everyone.
And after you make your comments tonight, you may go ahead and go. It's, it's late, it's nine o'clock is the limit. We need you to go home and get some sleep so you can work hard tomorrow. Mr. Beebe?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I would just like to first say congratulations to all the students and staff that were involved in the different fine arts programs at Met and Osborne during their competitions. It's always great to see the different ways students in our city show their love for music and continue to make the city proud. I would also like to say thank you for all the presentations tonight as they were very informative and happy spring break in advance. Thank you.
Hello, good evening to everybody. Um, I was proud to see a few familiar faces, um, out here while we discussed the highlights tonight. It was great to see that, that Manassas is home to such talented, creative, um, musical, to a talented, creative and musical community. Congratulations to the musicians and the musical directors for their spectacular work. Um, I also like to say that, um, what occurred yesterday at Covenant, um, School in Nashville, Tennessee, shocked many families. And my heart goes out to the students, families and teachers that had to experience an event that nobody should have to go through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beebe, and thank you, Ms. Island, and have a good evening. Next up, I'd like to ask for comments from Mrs. Williams.
Yes, pack up and go home, please. Not because we don't love you. So tonight was superior, all those superior awards. Um, I'll try to keep my comments short. Um, I'm really excited that, that Osborne High School's Performing Arts received another blue ribbon. I love to say that we're a blue ribbon school. Um, I had the pleasure of attending the wrestling banquet this past weekend and I just wanted to give them a shout out. We have five wrestlers qualified for state. Um, I actually went and attended. It was, um, it was just a great event, just people from, from our entire six A and actually I think there were some others, Brett, Brettsville was there. It was, it was, it was amazing to see all of, all of the wrestlers and so exciting to see five of our OHS, uh, students there. We had two, and I'm going to, I'm going to shout them out by name. Pablo Melendez and Luis Reyes, they actually are state qua- they actually got on the podiums and we've got pictures of them on the podiums at state. I just think that's exciting. I also want to mention that we are in the process of accepting applications for our School Board Representatives. I don't know how many of you know these, this position is for a year and we call for applications every year. And if you are interested, you can go to the website, the application's there, the criteria's there. Um, please check it out. Book donations are being collected at all the schools. You can take them to the Central Office for the Manassas Reads, which is being held on April twenty-ninth. So I want to remind people of that. Oh, pre-K applications are now open. Check out the elementary school that you will be attending and check out that website and you'll find applications there. Or of course, you can go into the school as well. Baldwin Elementary School has a science night on April thirteenth at six o'clock. Anybody who can attend, that would be fantastic. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mrs. Brooks?
Thank you, Chair. I do want to start by saying congratulations to all of the entities of our Fine Arts Department that we honored here tonight. It's a wonderful experience to be able to see such a broad spectrum of arts that are all excelling so greatly. It's just one of the wonderful things that happens in Manassas City Schools. I also want to take a minute to say, you know, happy spring break, it's coming up, be safe. But I also wanted to, um, speak a little bit on the fact that our students and our families, many of them from different cultures and backgrounds, um, will be spending the time this month to focus on a common theme. They're drawing closer to their beliefs and reflecting on becoming a better person. I hope we can all embrace our differences and come together at this time and search out ways that we can all reach out to the others and give a helping hand to those who are hurting or in need before another tragedy happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brooks. Mr. Hollingsworth?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to thank all the presenters today. I really appreciate your detailed presentations. Um, and I want to congratulate everyone recognized with spotlights and I hope everyone comes out to the biggest birthday party this weekend. Um, Manassas turns a hundred and fifty, so, uh, give you back my time.
Thank you. Mrs. Bresia?
Thank you. I wanted to also congratulate our extremely talented and enthusiastic musicians and singers. This is a side of MCPS that does not get nearly as much publicity as it should. Uh, so I am personally committing to telling two different people on the playground this week about our blue ribbon status and urge anybody else in the room here who's inclined to do that, tell two new people. If you see somebody pushing a stroller, stop them, tell them, did you know we have a blue ribbon fine art school just down the street, right here? Uh, so it was a really inspiring display and I'm very, really very proud of the kids. I also, I spent the day at Dean's School today, I have been here over twelve hours. And, and I want to thank, uh, the teacher, the administration here, the kids here for having me, experiencing this hospitality. I've really enjoyed the chance to spend a whole day at each school and then even some extra time in some select auditoriums. You know, it's been a real pleasure. And I also want to compliment, almost every department of the Central Office was here tonight presenting. Everybody did a great job, this has been a long night. So, good work, everybody.
Thank you, Mrs. Ball?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I guess we've talked about Nashville, I, I don't know if you can ever talk about it enough, but, um, just to put a fine point on it, it was a horrific situation that, um, I think needs more than thoughts and prayers. Thursday is Special Olympics coming up, I'm excited for our first opportunity at hosting this event. Um, looking forward to the upcoming, I guess we talked about the hundred and fiftieth already. Like to acknowledge, um, Women's History Month. I'm so proud to serve with so many capable and dynamic women on this board. And joint session with Council coming up tomorrow, we've already alluded to that, should be interesting. Um, uh, once again, thanks to the, I, I would like to acknowledge my pride in the excellence of the Fine Arts Department. I believe that's it, I wanted, uh, I think I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ball. Miss, Vice Chair Stevens?
Thank you. Um, real quick, as some of you may know, feeding students is near and dear to my heart and it's something I talk about and it's something I advocate for, free lunch, free breakfast and free lunch for our students. Um, this came from the VSB A Today that the USDA is trying to improve the reach of school, free school meals. The U.S. Department of Agriculture Thursday, so that would be this past Thursday, proposed a rule to expand access to the community eligibility provision, which allows high-poverty schools to serve free breakfast and lunch to all students without requiring families to file an application. The proposed change would lower the minimum threshold of identified student percentage from forty percent to twenty-five percent for a school or district to qualify for CEP. That percentage is calculated by dividing the number of students eligible for free meals by the total student enrollment. The USDA will open a forty-five-day public commenting period on the proposed CEP rule beginning this Thursday. You can go to the USDA website to find it. Um, we were talking about chronic asymptoteism today and that's an issue not here, just here in Manassas City, but in all schools around the country. And one of the barriers to school attendance is lack of food. When students and families don't have food at home, children are not ready to learn. Children are not healthy, they're more susceptible to disease and to illness. When we are able to provide free meals to our children, that's a reason for some of them to come to school. We're doing it this year, we'd like to be able to do it next year, but we cannot do it into perpetuity without more assistance from the federal government. So please, take a minute, file a public comment that says you support free breakfast and lunch for all our students because everyone deserves to eat healthy. all our students, because everyone deserves to eat healthy. And don't forget, we have free dinner at Osborne High School, Monday through Thursday nights. Anyone under the age of eighteen can eat for free, adults pay a nominal minimum fee to eat. Um, it's really important, near and dear to my heart, and just to touch on Nashville, we have to do better. There are three children who didn't come home last night. There are three families that don't get to celebrate any more birthdays. Those are nine-year-olds. There are nine-year-olds in this school. At some point, we have to say, truly, 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 say enough is enough. I'm not sad anymore, I'm angry. I'm angry that we keep hearing the news, we keep seeing news reports, we keep watching video, and we say, "Oh, how sad, oh, how tragic," but we don't do anything. Until we do something, nothing will change. Nothing. You can't sit and say this is sad and this is tragic, yet not take the next step to do something. How many more nine-year-olds have to die? Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Stevens. And I'm gonna wrap it up with my comments on some budget thoughts. And these are the times we live in, there's lots of school news out there, and a lot of things talking about school budgets. In LA, the LA Unified School District, school employees are getting a thirty percent increase in pay, finally. Spotsylvania County, here in Virginia, their school, uh, board is considering laying off a hundred and twenty staff members, sixty of them being teachers, and eliminating school libraries. I, for one, want to live in a city that values education, values the people that works in them, in our schools, and values their crucial role in our city. If this is something that's important to you, we need your support with City Council and state and federal legislators. Thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas meeting adjourned.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, seconded by Mr. Hollingsworth, that the School Board meeting adjourned. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Seven-zero.